Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order May 7th. The meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call, roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Great, thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Yes, we have Scott Agajanian on behalf of the executive team.
Oh, hold on one second.
Oh, sorry. Say when. All right. Honorable City Council, the executive team of the city of Marietta, most of which are here with us today, a couple had meetings that do not allow them to make this meeting, would like to express our unswerving support for our city manager, Mrs. Kimberly Summers. Knowing that the city manager's annual review is taking place today, we've decided that now is the proper time to highlight our appreciation of Kim's steadfast leadership, the productive environment she has created, and the ethical values she demonstrates. The success of this combination is evident in our annual city accomplishments, which you will find here as Exhibit A. With the city of Marietta producing high-level developments, successful events, nationally-ranked public safety levels, historic productivity, and solid benchmarks in community and employee satisfaction, having any group in the world these days agree on success is nearly impossible in this current climate. But Kim's record on these metrics is indisputable. She is strong, confident, a proven city manager that we are lucky to have working with us. As the city council, you have many vital decisions to make, and none is more important than hiring and retaining a city manager. As you weigh the many things that Kim has done while leading the city of Marietta, we hope you value her consistency, morality, and forthrightness. This cannot be an easy balance to maintain, as there are always pressing priorities and disputes on how to best accomplish them. Since her tenure began, her ability to facilitate change while maintaining stability has been integral to the city's success. She has brought us out of economic struggles, dramatically grown the city's budget, and has increased staffing levels to meet unprecedented demands. She has served with dignity and faithfulness to the city of Marietta. Kim Summers is a dynamic leader and a mentor to her staff. For these reasons and countless more, her entire executive team here today, and the ones that couldn't make it, remain loyal to this organization and wholeheartedly supports our city manager. Thank you for your continuous confidence in her leadership. And you'll find that every single director and executive director and assistant city manager has signed this document. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Moving on, we will recess to closed session and...
Before you recess, you shall meet on four items regarding...
Oh, sorry.
CS 1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.1 related to the matter of Val DeWisen, B, City of Marietta. CS 2, conference with labor negotiators. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with the city manager, the city attorney, and the city's negotiators regarding labor negotiations with the Marietta General Employees Association and the Marietta Supervisors Association. CS 3, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.92 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in two cases. And CS 4, public employee performance evaluation and compensation. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Sections 54957 and 54957.6A, title of position, city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we are going to go into recess until closed session, and we will reconvene at 5:00 PM for the workshops. So, thank you all very much. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. On May 7th, workshop on the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call, roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
I'm here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
I'm here.
Mayor Stone?
Present.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so we are on to our workshop, the proposal capital... The proposed capital improvement plan, year 2024, 2025 through 2028 and 2029. And I see that staff is already present, so proceed, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. My name's Jennifer Terry, I'm the Finance Manager. And here tonight with me is R. N. Mendoza, Financial Analyst with the Finance Department, Jeff Hitch, Senior City Engineer, and Brian Crawford, Senior Program Manager. Tonight's workshop is intended to receive input on the proposed projects for inclusion into the capital improvement plan for fiscal year '24, '25 through fiscal year '28, '29. I would like to thank everyone in connection with the preparation of the proposed CIP budget. It definitely takes a village to get to this point. R. N. will provide an overview of the carryover budget, the proposed budget for new and existing projects, as well as a brief overview of the Economic Development and Police Department projects. Jeff and Brian will provide a more in-depth project-specific information for their projects. Project managers from other departments are here tonight if you have questions regarding their projects outside of the Library, CSD, and Public Works. Before I turn the presentation over, I wanted to point out that $23.4 million in proposed allocations for fiscal year '25. Of that, approximately $19.7 million, or 84.3%, is being allocated from various DIF funds. These allocations are a result of the adopted five-year DIF report. The allocations of these funds does not provide adequate funding for the projects, but we are... We are setting the money aside, and we will continue to do so until those projects are fully funded. Now, I'll turn the presentation over to R. N.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, city staff, members of the public, R. N. Mendoza, Financial Analyst. We're going to go over quickly our agenda for our workshop, namely the CIP summary, CIP budget summary, the new CIP projects, and future actions. The CIP is a long-range five-years planning for all individual capital improvement projects and funding sources. The plan prioritizes projects over the next five fiscal years based on community needs, but only appropriates funding for the first year of the plan. The funding for capital projects comes from a variety of sources, but for the most part, these funds are restricted for specific types of capital project construction. These restricted funds are not available to be spent on ongoing operating costs. There are approximately over 160 CIP projects that make up the 110.4 million being appropriated for fiscal year '24, '25. The proposed appropriations are staff estimates based on preliminary assessment for each project. If budget revisions are necessary based on bid responses, then an item will be taken to city council to request additional appropriations. The largest component on the budget, which is 86% of the budget, as Jennifer mentioned, the development impact fees, storm drains funds, which is the largest source for fiscal year '25 at approximately $48 million, or 44% of the budget, followed by the transportation funds, which is your Measure A gas tax and SB 1 RMRA, which is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act funds, at $27.5 million. And lastly are the grant funds at approximately $18.2 million, or 17% of the entire budget. The remaining 14% or $19 million of the different... Of the budget comprise of different special revenue funds, as well as the Measure T and general fund capital funds. The next... This next slide shows the proposed appropriations by category. The largest allocation is allocated towards streets and highways, and the rest are allocated in descending order among the categories, namely the bridges, parks, building, other improvements, storm drains, and traffic signals. Mr. Crawford and Mr. Hitch will discuss these later in detail. Staff is proposing 13 new projects in the CIP. The changes to the existing project total approximately $16.7 million, as stated in Section 3B, Pages 10 through 13, under the introduction as attached under Exhibit B. For the fiscal year ending '23, '24, at the end of this year, the estimated carryover balance is approximately $86.9 million for all projects, and $23.4 million are for new and proposed changes to the existing projects. Overall, the total estimated '24, '25 capital improvement plan budget is approximately $110.4 million. The next few slides I am presenting on behalf of the Economic Development and Police Departments as part of the proposed citywide projects for fiscal years '24, '25. I'm just highlighting some of their significant projects to you this afternoon, and the details are in your packet as Exhibit B. The Economic Development Department has a modification to their existing project. Staff is anticipating that costs will potentially exceed the existing budget when bids are received. The proposed appropriation to the existing project is approximately $845,000 to complete the construction phase. The Police Department has two projects, namely the locker room remodel. It is to address the current and future staffing, adding approximately 150 lockers to the current locker room space. And the next project is to design and expand the existing police headquarters by approximately 10,000 square feet. With that, I conclude my portion of the presentation, and will now turn it over to Senior Program Manager Brian Crawford, followed by City Engineer Jeff Hitch.
Thank you, R. N., I appreciate it. Good evening. Community Services is proposing six additional projects that we hope will get the process started for bringing a number of amenities to our residents for recreation opportunities. The first project is citywide pickleball courts. As you can see here, we have a couple renderings of proposed courts at Cal Oak Sports Park, which is actually a retrofit of the tennis court, where we can add additional, four additional pickleball courts, and then also constructing new pickleball courts at Firefighters Park. We're also looking at other possible locations, Caber Canyon, Antelope Hills, and Valley Vista. The next project is our Marietta Youth Center Phase 2. The youth center is 10 years old now, and there is a lot of room for an addition. And there's always been a planned addition for multipurpose rooms, a large gymnasium, where they can offer a lot more additional programming. It's a super-popular youth center, and it's really one of our crown jewels. Next one is Pioneer Park Phase 2. We have about an eight-acre parcel here off of Calmia and, I believe, Adams. And it's a fairly large parcel where what we're hoping to do is do the design work, master plan, and take the information that we're getting out of our park's master plan and seeing what we can program for this space. Our next project is a restroom at Vintage Reserve Park. It's a really busy, popular park right next to an elementary school. Gets a lot of traffic, and there is currently just a porta potty there. Our proposal is to build a permanent restroom facility at that park. The next one is Alderwood Splash Pad. And you can see here, you know, we've just kind of popped up an area where we think we can probably fit it in. This park is really popular, it's in our new, newer developed areas going north towards Mapleton on Whitewood. And we have pickleball and basketball there already. We think this would be a really great location for a splash pad. And then our next one is Marietta Creek Regional Trail. We have a couple of different bridge projects that we need to put in there for pedestrian crossings and to do general improvements to the trail to complete a 20-mile stretch, uninterrupted stretch. So, it's really good amenity for our residents. And I think that's all I've got. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jeff Hitch.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Good evening, or good afternoon, I suppose. Glad to be here again to talk about our new CIP projects. We're going to walk through just a couple of new projects. We just have seven new projects that we're going to talk about here this afternoon. First, of course, being our annual allocation of pedestrian safety enhancements. This, of course, is our project that works on AD8 improvements on our curb ramps, as you can see in the photo there throughout the city. We typically get community development block grant funds in the amount of $400,000 annually from this program. And we continue to, to continue to do that. This is going to be for the fiscal year '24, '25. And I would expect this construction to be taking place probably in the, near the end of 2025. Jefferson Avenue and Magnolia Traffic Signal is another project. We have a couple of... This has been a priority traffic signal that's been, it's been on our priority list. We're planning on allocating traffic signal DIF funds to construct this signal. As you can see here from the photo, it's an always stop in its current condition. This would turn this into a signalized intersection and has been actually requested multiple times by different, various members of the community who are concerned about people not stopping at that particular stop sign. Another new project is the Keller Road and Ziders Road traffic signal. Some may say "Ziders," that's not in the city of Marietta, and they would be correct. Everything north of Keller Road on the west side of the 215 is in the city of Menifee. However, this signal is in the vicinity of the future Marietta Hills development project. They are conditioned to pay cash and lieu for a portion of that signal, and so we need a place to store that funds, those funds, when they come in. It's the purpose of adding this signal to the CIP. This is not funded at the moment, and will be funded in years to come as the need arises. Line G channel, we decided to create this project this year so we can start studying and analyzing what we may need to do for Line G. We've had some historic problems with desiltation downstream of Washington Avenue, or between Washington Avenue and Marietta Creek. You can see Marietta Creek on the left side of the picture. The channel is improved upstream of Nutmeg, or all the way on the right side of the picture above Nutmeg. And then it runs from right to left, if you will, downstream across the page. Of course, there is a box covert that crosses Washington Avenue that sometimes gets filled in with sedimentation. Eventually, constructing this channel in a meaningful way will help to reduce the sedimentation that we see there and minimize the problems that we're experiencing associated with that channel. This would be a very expensive project. We would be, we're anticipating currently, this would be around a $9 to $10 million construction project in addition to engineering. We do want to start analyzing what that looks like and start sourcing for funds. One of those funding sources would, of course, be hopefully flood control, having flood control assist with that project as may be appropriate. Photo on the right side gives you an idea of what that channel looks like. Has very steep, eroded channel banks, and it really produces a safety concern. Some of those banks are upwards of 10, 15 feet tall. So, gives you some of the idea of what we're trying to do with that project. Next project is the Line D Box Covert at Marietta Hot Springs Road. As Line D crosses Marietta Hot Springs, is commonly referred to as Yoder Wash, eventually continues southerly across Marietta Hot Springs Road, gets down to Guava Street, and goes through a box covert that we built years ago, and discharges into Marietta Creek. It's a relatively large channel. There's an existing box covert that is not wide enough for the, for the ultimate width of Marietta Hot Springs Road. As we currently sit, we have a land development project on both the north side, and there's two fields on the north side of Marietta Hot Springs and on the south side, neither of which are going to develop that box, as this box is just off of their property frontage. So, there is now a growing need to now widen, extend that box on either side. Currently estimating that project to be about a million, million and a half as far as development of the project, environmental mitigation, and the actual construction of the project. So, that is a project that we anticipate starting. Last couple of projects are normal projects. So, pavement resurfacing, asphalt overlay for '24, '25 is anticipated to be the Jefferson Avenue project from Calmia Street up to Biosteros. Most may not be familiar with Biosteros. It's all the way at the north end, just north of Nutmeg, almost at the northerly boundary of Marietta. This would be just resurfacing that roadway throughout that extent. And then citywide slurry seal for '25, '26. And some may ask, why '25, '26? It's a, the slurry seal program is now an every-other-year program. We've always been doing it that way. We're now going to, kind of formalize that in the CIP. Every other year, we will be, we will be funding the project. I kind of bring it up because it is, we're building funds for that '25, '26 slurry seal program. So, you'll see that, and we'll see some, some funds being placed in it. But that project would not be constructed until '25, '26. We are currently working on the current slurry seal project for '23, '24, we're just a little late on it. And that concludes all the new projects that we have here in front of us. And I'm going to turn this back over to Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. Hitch. For future actions, tomorrow night, staff will be presenting the same item to the Planning Commission per California Government Code 65401 to determine the general plan conformity of the projects, as well as on June 4th, we will be returning to you for a public hearing per California Government Code 65403 for the CIP budget adoption fiscal year '24, '25, and for the capital improvement plans from '24, '25 through '28, '29. And that'll be the conclusion of our presentation this afternoon, and staff us available for any questions.
Thank you very much, team, and... Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, very well done. Just had a couple of questions on the street resurfacing slurry seal. Does the citywide slurry seal, that's not the major roads, correct? That's just the residential piece?
Yes, just for brevity, I left some of that out. But yes, the slurry seal is just for the residential roadways, and then some of our smaller arterial roadways. Hayes, for example, we did some slurry work on Hayes a while back. It's more of a collector-type roadway. And we'll, we'll still try to do some of those where we can, where we can save money.
And the major arterials are on a separate schedule?
Correct, that's our asphalt overlay.
And it's a revolving schedule as well, correct?
We do asphalt overlay program, we get funded annually with SB 1 funds. That's where we allocate those SB 1 funds. And we may be supplementing that with some additional funding as, as time goes by. But yes, that is done annually. We do, in fact, we have asphalt overlay currently under construction on Clinton Keith Road as we speak.
Yeah, because it's a lot less expensive to keep a road in good maintenance than it is to replace a road that's failed.
Completely agree.
And I know that in previous years, we didn't have the funding to have that program. We had that, we used to do that, decade or better ago. And then through 2008, we had to kind of let a few things go, and the roads in Marietta obviously reflect that. And so now we're playing catch-up, so to speak. When do you expect everything to be back up to par?
Well, our PCI index, pavement condition index, that we've analyzed about four years ago, we're getting ready to do another evaluation of our city streets. We were at, just, just above 70%, which actually is relatively good for, for a city of our size. Part of that is, you know, denotes the age of the city. We're relatively young cities, or, or streets are actually in better condition than, than many other agencies that have older, older streets than we do. It, it's a little hard to tell how we can, how rapidly we'll be able to increase. Usually, it's difficult to, without putting an exhaustive amount of funding towards, towards those types of improvements. So, the, the time will effectively tell as we do the next evaluation of our PCI as to whether or not we're going to be able to make advances on that, on the overall PCI. I think the efforts that we're doing, I think we'll start to, we'll, we're going to start to see it increase. Being, staying somewhere between 70 and 80% is where we effectively will want to be. If you're at 100%, that means you're probably spending...
It's going to be a lot of money.
Probably way more money than you should be. If you're at 50%, then you're way behind.
I know the Marietta Hot Springs Road widening is going to address that whole section of road. When it's widened, it's going to be repaved at the same time.
That is correct.
And I know that Antelope Road is scheduled for later this year. It's just, obviously, Clinton Keith Road is, is important, Jefferson is important. I mean, those main arterials, what is the lifespan of once it's resurfaced to when it needs to be resurfaced again?
Largely depends on the size of the road, the traffic volume on the road. We overlaid, for example, the stretch of Hot Springs that you're referring to. We overlaid that nine years ago, and you could see it's now needing repair. So, on, on heavily-traveled roads like that, usually just under, between five and 10 years on heavily-traveled roads. Generally, we're seeing 10 to 15 years out of our kind of medium-sized road, and maybe closer to 20 years on our light-traveled roads. But it, there's a lot of variations with that. Usually, volume plays a pretty heavy, heavy predictor in it. We have natural springs in the area like we do up on Cal Oak. Sometimes that has other impacts to some of our roadways.
And also truck traffic. If Hot Springs becomes more of a major thoroughfare for truck transportation or Clinton Keith, as new developments come in north of us, obviously, that can play a part in as well. I look forward to that next survey. Do you think that'll be done next year?
My plan is, is to try to have that done before this workshop next year.
Perfect, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilwoman DeForest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight, or this afternoon. And I just want to say that it, when I look through the capital improvement projects, it's kind of between a want and desire and a need. So, I love how you have really helped with the balance of this and actually listened. That's so nice that, that we actually can have constituents say this is what they want, and then we say, well, we need this, but let's put that balance together. So, the pickleball courts, I think, are absolutely fantastic. We have been hearing the need or want for those. And the splash pad, I think, is fantastic since we don't have a pool currently. I think that might fill in the gap a little bit. That's very forward-thinking on, on all of the parts. And I'm really excited to see that Pioneer Park is on, since that is my district, and there is no place over there at all for kids to play. And we have a lot of development coming that way, and I'm excited to see all that development. But I'd also like to see kids have a place to play. So, thank you so much for this, and thank you for your hard work, and greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeForest. MPT Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two questions as well. Where can residents find the schedule if they've never had the slurry seal? Where is that located?
We do have a, I don't believe the current schedule is, is listed on our website. We usually post a listing of the streets as we're going to initiate a slurry seal. We have a slurry seal that's expected to be under construction later this year. We're planning on putting it out to bid in the next month or so.
Okay.
So, that website will be updated. As it turns out, we plan on bringing some information regarding that slurry seal program to the state of the city, the engineering booth.
Okay.
So, people can actually attend that, and we'll actually have a list of the streets and as well as a map of the anticipated...
Oh, good.
Roads that will be on the next upcoming slurry seal. Anyway, so we will be updating the website with that information as well.
My next question is, and I'm going to piggyback on Councilman Holliday's comment. Hot Springs is a hot road for trucks, semi-trucks, cement trucks, every kind of truck you can think of. Are we going to go below the grade and start over and give it a better finish or a better road than we have so it doesn't deteriorate so quickly like you did on Cal Oak? I mean, is that going to be something we're going to be looking at?
That's a good question. When you talk about going below the finish, effectively, you're talking about doing a full, what we call a rehabilitation, which is removing all of the pavement as well as the aggregate. It's a very expensive process to do that. I don't believe that's what we're going to do for this next upcoming overlay that we plan on doing, or the work we're doing on the road. plan on doing, or the work we're doing on the road. The work is to widen the road. Where we currently, our current thinking is that we're going to be doing some additional, some grinding of the existing pavement surface, and then add some additional pavement to that surface, so you would have a bigger structural section than what you have currently. So we're still, we're adding asphalt to the top of the road. We do anticipate, however, that that road will need to be rehabilitated. We want to try to get the longevity that we can out of the road that we do have, so that we're not, we're not spending money prematurely, let's put it that way, before the road has completely failed.
I do know that there may be some grant opportunities from RCTC for rehabilitation of a road going all the way down, so I will continue to monitor that, and if I do see something, I'll make sure to bring it to your attention. Thank you so very much for your presentation, it was very, very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Can you go back to the streets and highways slide, please? So I saw a slide that said streets and highways. Did I, am I wrong?
Could be from the, the pie chart earlier.
Oh, you know what, you're right. Can you just explain in layman terms exactly what that means to me, please?
Oh, yes. So the entire budget that staff is proposing, 46% of the budget, or about 50.6 million of the budget, is going towards streets and highways projects.
But can you be specific, what does that mean?
It means that we are appropriating funding that is available in fiscal year, next fiscal year, to complete streets and highways-related projects.
Got it, thank you very much. Also, to piggyback with MPT Warren talked about with RTA and possible grants, since Marietta Hot Springs, I'm predicting a large amount of travel is in, in the unincorporated area. Is there any way that we could partner with Supervisor Washington and help fund that road?
Well, Marietta Hot Springs actually is, is, is partly funded by grant, by two separate grants that are regional grants, so one of them is TUMF, it's receiving about $3 million in TUMF funds, and then we also applied for a grant for the RCTC Regional Arterials Grant Program, and we were successful in that grant as well. Also, almost, almost $3 million there as well. With that, I think the remainder of, is, of that project is, it's a fully funded project at this point.
Fantastic, okay, thank you for that clarification.
So we're not, we're not currently searching for more funds for that.
Perfect. Also want to piggyback on Councilwoman DeForest. As you know, we've had a lot of requests for pickleball courts, so that's very exciting, very exciting. I, I love that you are putting a restroom in one of our, you know, popular parks as well, and then the splash pad, and yes, I agree, that's going to be a very, very exciting project. Another thing that I think that one of our residents have been requesting since I've been elected is upgrading in, in the infrastructure of storm drains, so I'm really happy to see that that also is on the list. And then my last question is, with regards to Marietta PD, is it possible that we could go up with a second story with that building?
I couldn't comment on that, but maybe I could ask Chief Conrad.
I'm not sure Chief Conrad knows anything about construction, but he might. Is he here?
Lieutenant Durant also is here to explain that.
It's our understanding that the building, the foundation wasn't set to go two stories.
Okay.
The building itself can only stay at one story.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Okay, with that, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Councilmembers, let's bring it back, if there's any additional discussions. Councilmember Holliday? Nope? Nope, okay. Thank you very, very much for your presentation, and at this time, we're going to call a recess until 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 7 regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, will you please provide a report from closed session?
Yes, Mayor, the City Council met in closed session with four different agenda items. The first item was to confer with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 related to the matter of Valdhusen versus City of Marietta. In this matter, the council was updated, there's no reportable action. The second item was to confer with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding negotiations with two labor groups. Again, in this item, the council was updated, no reportable action. And the third item, the council met regarding two matters of anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.9D2. In both of these items, the council was updated, no reportable action. The fourth item was a public employee performance evaluation and compensation discussion regarding the position of the city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 and 54957.6A. The council conducted the performance evaluation for the city manager, and the mayor, would you like to elaborate?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So prior to going into closed session, the city executive team came before council, and I would like to read a brief statement from the executive team. As the city council, you may have many vital decisions to make, and none is more important than hiring and retaining the city manager. As you weigh the many things Kim has done while leading the city, we hope that you will value her consistency, morality, and forthrightness. This cannot be an easy balance to maintain as there are always pressing priorities and disputes on how to accomplish them best. Since her tenure, her ability to facilitate change while maintaining stability has been integral to the city's success. She has brought us out of economic struggles, dramatically grown the city's budget, and increased staffing levels to meet unprecedented demands. She has served with dignity and faithfulness to the City of Marietta. Kim Summers is a dynamic leader and mentor to her staff. For these reasons and countless more, her executive team remains loyal to this organization and wholeheartedly supports our city manager. Thank you for your continuous confidence in her leadership. And with that, I will call upon our city council colleagues to give a brief comment, and we're going to start with Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A city manager obviously does not run the city by herself. A city this size takes an entire team of executives and supervisors and staffs to make the city what it is, and one of the hallmarks of a good leader is the team that they put in place. And I have told Madam City Manager on multiple occasions that the team that she has put in place, and your loyalty to her, is a testament of her leadership abilities, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilwoman DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would reiterate those words as well, and it was amazing to see the entire staff sign, and all the directors sign this, and talk about what an amazing productive environment she has created for all of you, and reviewing, which is confidential, and I will not let it go far, but 31 pages of progress for our city, quite an impressive amount of accomplishments. So just reiterating that same sense that our mayor and Councilmember Holliday. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeForest. Councilmember Lavell.
Thank you, Mayor. Being kind of newer to the elected role, about a year and four months in, I think now, there aren't a whole lot of measures outside of my direct relation and conversation with Kim to, to judge this on, but it was a testament to see your entire executive staff there and to sign a letter of attestation like this. I look forward to that continued support from, from you guys as executive staff and the remainder time I have up here of that day as with you guys. So, Kim, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavell. MPT Warren.
You love saying that. Thank you, Mayor. Not sure if you all know this, but we have an award-winning, literally an award-winning city manager. Many, many cities out there would love to have her. I too have complete confidence, and I support her 100%. Her loyalty to our city, her leadership is why we have notch, top-notch employees and a strong team. Her integrity is beyond reproach. I too support her, and I'm so honored that she is our city manager.
Thank you, MPT Warren. As a entrepreneur who owned 6BD Supply and Salons, and I had 60 employees and subcontractors that worked for me, it's a testament when your team admires and values the ownership of a business or a city manager, and I love how dedicated that you are to your leader. It makes us, all five of us, very proud that she is respected the way she is by all of you. And Kim, there are amazing accomplishments, and like Councilwoman DeForest talked about, there's over 30 pages of accomplishments just from 2023 and 2024. Put your seatbelt on, because when we have our next goal session meeting, there's going to be a long list of more things. So anyways, thank you all, and thank you to the executive team for your commitment to your city manager. Moving on, we are going to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by, oh, I messed up, didn't I? Okay, so our Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by our Economic Development Director, Scott Agigianian. Continue standing, please, for the invocation led by Josh Marino by The Rock Church.
Everyone, please place your hand over your heart and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Heavenly Father, we come before you right now, Lord, and we give you this moment, this time. We give our hearts over to you, knowing that you are the peak of wisdom. So, Lord, as we seek your wisdom, as we seek your righteousness, as we pursue and consider things for the city of Marietta, Heavenly Father, I pray that you lead us and guide us, that in all things, we are considering the lives of people that you've given us to steward well. We pray all this in your precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, will you please call, roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavell.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
I'm here.
Mayor Stone.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Great, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to presentations, we have a presentation for Public Works Week, and can we have Mr. Molling come up to the front, please? I'm going to read something to you, and then we're all going to come down and just have a quick little picture with you. So National Public Works Week is May 19, 2024 to May 25, 2024. Whereas the National Public Works Week was created in 1960 as a public education campaign to bring awareness of the impact of public works has in a community life, and whereas the city Marietta community relies on public works in order to sustain our overall public health, quality of life, and general well-being. And whereas the services will not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all level. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that we, the city council of the City of Marietta, hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through May 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week, and extend our appreciation to the Marietta Public Works Department and Public Works Director Bob Maling for his vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the City of Marietta dated this day, the 7th day of May 2024. So would you like to just say a few words?
I would. Thank you to the city council for the added support, we greatly appreciate that, also the support of the city manager, and just want to thank the folks in Public Works, all the men and women that do the daily work that you see out there and don't see out there, in the parks, on the streets, facilities, just keeping the city safe and clean and beautiful, and just a beautiful community. I want to thank you all, I appreciate your support, again.
It is, it's a beautiful city, and thank you. And how many years have you been with the City of Marietta?
22 plus.
Fantastic, thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Call for a motion in a second. You have a motion by Councilmember Holliday, and a second by MPT Warren, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the city manager administration update, please. City manager update is the opportunity for the city manager to provide community updates as well as department or commission announcements on current and upcoming projects. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in addition to Public Works Week, this is also Public Service Recognition Week, and it honors federal, state, county, local, and tribal governments, employees. As we know, it's the employees that make an organization, and we're very fortunate to have the best, and I'd like to thank them publicly for all that they do to make the lives of Marietta residents better. In addition to that, it's also Professional Municipal Clerks Week. They're doing everything this week. So this is the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. It started in 1969 and is a celebration reflection on the importance of the city clerk's office. So thank you, City Clerk's Office, for all that you do to keep us in line. And then just a quick reminder, before Christina comes up, we're going to remind you that the city council meeting for May 21, we will be dark. The next regular city council meeting will be on June 4 due to your attendance at ICSC.
Kristin?
Yeah. Hello.
Well, so I'm just going to give an update of what is going on in Marietta, so some of the fun stuff that is happening, and let me grab the clicker. So first, coming up on Thursday, for people who are watching or in the audience, we do have State of the City, and that is happening this Thursday. There's a VIP reception that starts at 5:30 to 6:30, and then Mayor Stone's address will start at 7:00. So this is kind of a chance just to come out and see what is happening with the city of Marietta, some updates. We're going to have all the departments there, as well as some organizations that we partner with the city. And then on May 16, we have another Parks and Recreation Master Plan Workshop that is going to be happening, and that is going to be at the Marietta Community Center. Some other events, Marietta Market Nights is happening also on May 16 from 5 to 9, and that is going to be in downtown Marietta. I know that the city manager also mentioned Professional Municipal Clerks Week, but I also wanted to give a little bit of a shout-out to our clerks department as well, because they do a lot for us. It's also Mental Health Awareness Month, and so I thought this was a great opportunity just to touch on the fact that the city of Marietta- just to touch on the fact that the city of Marietta has partnered with Care Solis and that gives people in the city of Marietta, whether they live here or work here, access to mental health services. There's a QR code on your screen right now. Free to use that QR code. Upcoming events, since we don't have another council meeting later on this month, we have a Memorial Day service that is on May 27. That is happening at 8:00 in the morning at our Town Square Park and Amphitheater. And then, we have our monthly coffee with the city, May 28 at 8:30 at the Marietta Innovation Center and that address is up there. This is just another chance to meet with your city leaders and talk with them, ask them some questions, hey, with a cup of coffee. And just last but not least, as always, we want to stay connected. So, up there, we have mariettaca.gov/connect. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristine. And also, I just want to say thank you so much for your creativity and your out-of-the-box thinking for the state of the city. I hope everybody is going to enjoy it as much as I already am enjoying it. So, thank you so much.
Me too.
Mayor, if I could just jump in, I forgot to mention that it's also Nurses Week. And we have Jen Antonucci, who is our resident nurse who takes care of us. And so, we want to thank her for everything that she does as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. And also, just another shout-out to our clerk's office. Thank you so much for all that you do for us, keeping us in compliance and we really appreciate your entire team. So, thank you so much. Moving on to Governing Body Commission Committee Board Reports. The Governing Body Reports is an opportunity for the City Council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commission committees, and board meeting attendance. The report shall not exceed three minutes. And we will move on to Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, I attended the Western Riverside Council of Governments and this year at the General Assembly, we will appoint Rita Rogers, Brenda Densted, and Jacqueline Castilas to serve as Chair, Vice Chair, and Second Vice Chair respectively for the 2024-2025 year. We reviewed TUMF and, which is a regional transportation impact fee, which is designed to mitigate congestion. It is, affects only new development, residential and non-residential. Funds go to arterial bridges, separation, grade separation, interchanges. It does not fund local streets or freeway improvements. There was a NEXUS study done to determine how much fees needed to increase for the 24-25 year. And it looks like single-family residences, which are currently at 10,000 per unit, the NEXUS study can push that fee all the way up to 15,000. It won't go any higher than that. It could go lower, but the NEXUS says it can go up to that point. Multifamily residential currently at 6,500, could go up to 79. Industrial service retail also will see a fee increase. AAB 602 impact fees for residential units now have to be calculated on a square foot basis. We've already talked about that, that a couple council member meetings ago. The history of increases so far with our TUMF fee is '07, fees increased. 2012, fees were reduced to kind of help the recession bounce back. And in 2017, it was phased back in. They feel that the gap in raising the fees has cost hundreds of millions of dollars of lost. So, we're going to accept the NEXUS fee and when we look at the fee increase for, it's about $30 per month for a $600,000 home, to give everyone some perspective. So, WR Cog's working on that. It hasn't been accepted. Of course, it'll come back to us as a council to be put into place. So, thank you for that, Madam Mayor. That is everything. If you need to get ahold of me or have questions on that report, my contact information is there as well.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the privilege of attending the Southern California Association of Governments yearly Summit or Conference, otherwise known as SCAG, which might be the worst acronym in the entire existence of acronyms. But I was there with you, Mayor Stone. We got to hear a lot of ideas about, you know, what's going on in the state, how other cities are handling problems with congestion, infrastructure development. And one of those, yeah, picture on the far left is Andrew Maciel from Pachanga Tribe. I got to sit next to him during the election of the new officers for the upcoming year. Weather was great and good time being there with the mayor and I look forward to next year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Regional Conservation Authority, which is the agency that implements the multi-species habitat conservation plan. It's the plan that nobody likes to hear about, but it is important to conserve our species and plant materials so we don't wipe out those things that need to be protected. And while developers may not be happy about the plan, it's important that it's implemented properly. And the RCA is working on revising some of those things to, since it's been in place for 20 years, it needs to have a few revisions. So, they're working on that. At this last meeting, we approved, reviewed, and approved our 2024-25 budget, which fortunately is looking better than it did a year ago when we were being hit with more purchases required by law than we had money for. So, fortunately, for the 24-25 year, we have sufficient funding to purchase all the lands that we need to purchase. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a busy couple weeks. On April 17, I had the privilege of taking a Sacramento advocacy trip with Mayor Stone, City Manager Assistant City Manager Justin Clifton, City Assistant to City Manager Rosa Vega, and Management Analyst Isaac Bravo. It was a whirlwind trip. When they said, "Put your walking shoes on," they really meant, "Put your running shoes on." I did not know we could cover so much in such a short period of time, which we did. We had the option, or we had the good fortune to meet with Townsend's Public Affairs Office, Lori Waters, the Associate Deputy Director of Programming, Active Transportation Program, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, Economic Development Division, and Climate Adaptation Planning Division. And I'm not going to tell you that all they told us was great and wonderful, but we did get a lot of information. We did meet with the Staff of Assembly member Kate Sanchez. She was unavailable for our meeting. And we met with Senator Kelly Ciarto. It was an amazing trip. I learned a lot and other than Southwest Airlines computers all going down, it was a good trip home, too. In addition to that, right after we got back, April 22, I attended the RCTC Transportation Committee Budget Implementation Meeting. On the 24th, I attended the Riverside County Elected Leaders Collaborative Group where RCTC came and spoke to us. On the 24th, I also went out to the RTA Transportation Meeting. And in wrap-up of this, on Earth Day, they gave 19,500 free rides for all of the residents within Riverside County, which I thought was amazing. You can read the rest of the report right here. We've done, we've come a long ways. Raidership is up. And I do want to remind people that, starting on June 1, RT is offering 25-cent rides to all, to all summer fix routes and go metro. And starting July 1, youth rides will be free for one year thanks to a state grant. And that concludes my GBRs. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. As Councilmember Lavelle had stated, that he and I were at SCAG. And what I love about this conference is the collaboration that we have amongst the cities in Southwest Riverside County. We're more alike than we're not alike. We still have the same infrastructure issues, transportation issues. And this conference, I will tell you, it's a very interesting conference to see their perspective about growing communities. It's not a one-size-fits-all. And while it's interesting to hear their perspective, there's a lot of things that, from this organization, that is a challenge for us here in Marietta. But it is still very interesting to see how the climate of development and infrastructure is changing throughout the state of California. And that's one of the reasons why we need to have a seat at the table, so we do know what's going on. So, with that, that concludes my Governing Body Commission Report. And we're going to move on now to public comments. And this is on non-agenda items. So, any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies or any other not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Requests for more time must be made to the city clerk with a timing limit of a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any, any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Casson Klein.
Thank you.
Last meeting, you adopted the new DIF increase with a very short grandfathering clause. You heard from a number of developers that came and spoke to you and many asked for a seat at the table and to be heard, while no one mentioned continuing the hearing, but essentially, that was the message. Now, some of you may think I'm going to speak out of both sides of my mouth tonight because consistently, I've talked about, you know, your constituents can't continue to subsidize DIF. However, I didn't see any harm in continuing the item. But you deviated a little bit from how we normally run public hearings in that you took public comment before, before your deliberation. And as you were speaking in your deliberations, I thought of an alternative, which I emailed to you, the five of you. And so, I'm here tonight, what I passed out was, I'm here to ask one of the three of you, Councilman Holliday, Councilman Warren, or Councilwoman DeForest, at the end of the meeting, to ask for reconsideration of that item so that you can have a workshop with developers. Now, you're able to do that because Council Policy 7.4, which I just handed to you, which this version was adopted in 2019, it was previously adopted in 2014, gives you that authority to do that. I don't think I'm here speaking by myself and we all know that developers are the mother's milk of local politics. So, that concludes my comments on that matter. That was the only matter that I was prepared to speak about, but being surprised by the statement, the complimentary statement that you wrote about our fine city manager, that is unprecedented and it's absolutely wonderful. You've heard me say a number of times, Kim is absolutely the best city manager that this city has had, in my opinion, in the 25 years that I've lived here and the previous time that I, that I've spent in the city prior to incorporation. However, that begs the question, if there were a vote of no confidence, would that be read aloud publicly? Thank you.
Good evening, Marietta City Council and beloved community. I am Amy Edgeworth, founder of the Pearl Center for Creative Arts and Chief Engineer of the Marietta Train Project. And tonight, I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of our community members who participated in our month-long Teenology Tapestry Fest at the Marietta Public Library. Together, we distributed 200 kits to teens and families, which included a family tree worksheet and a tapestry art kit. This culminated in a vibrant community celebration on April 27, where we unveiled the stunning community tapestry. The event was alive with local family-friendly musicians providing the soundtrack and it gave everyone an opportunity to make new connections. A special shout-out and thank you to our library for providing a space for this unique program. I must also give a huge shout-out to our 3rd District County Supervisor Chuck Washington for attending our celebration and encouraging our aim to enrich our community through unique family history and community arts programs. Be sure to visit the tapestry, which is on display at the library until the end of the month. Moving on to our local historical society and the Marietta Museum. Those of you who know me well understand that if there's an event featuring any form of delightfully ridiculous alliteration, well, I'm probably behind it in some way. So, of course, I'm thrilled to remind you of our latest exhibit, Heritage Hats and Handbags, which is now open and features an amazing assortment of vintage women's fashion and accessories sourced directly from personal collections of our community members, paying tribute to the styles of what mom used to wear. Among the display are three exquisite wedding dresses, but I encourage you to check out the case in the back for a vintage firefighter's jacket from Station 16 worn by a certain female resident who just might have a familial connection to me. And if you venture into the small room at the far back, you'll find an old cowgirl jacket that once belonged to yours truly. Sadly, it no longer fits, but remember, this isn't just about me, despite my tendency to chat a lot more than the others involved. And this is why I owe a very big and sincere thank you to the members of the Marietta Valley Historical Society and the numerous residents who contributed to this collection, which will be on display for one month only at our local museum. Lastly, no speech of gratitude would be complete without mentioning the increasingly popular Marietta Market Nights. These events are not mere markets, they're vibrant gatherings where I've truly felt the heartbeat of our community. Through countless conversations, the feedback received from residents of all ages each month, and informal chats with council members who come by to say hello, it's truly a place for connecting. These interactions have been pivotal, reaffirming that our community is as enthusiastic about this project as we are. And now, I believe, is the opportune time for the City Council to prioritize and support this project that has been nurtured by our collective aspirations and community interactions. Together, we're laying down these tracks with every small interaction, shared story, and every moment of support. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have Connie McConnell and I do have Casey Gerardo, who'd like to donate his three minutes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Good evening again. You know, some people can't come to these meetings. And as I go around town, I've been hearing some thoughts and some rumors, you know, kind of through the grapevine. And so, I thought I would look into it. And I'm going to show you a little video. And sometimes, you know, things, it can be harsh, but as a city council, you really need to hear these things. So, my disclaimer is, I didn't film it, I didn't coerce anybody, and I didn't solicit anybody. Roll it.
We love Market Night!
Hey, folks, come on down to Marietta Market Night. Come to the information booth.
Welcome to Marietta Market Nights.
First and third Thursdays of the month. And now, we've expanded to this whole streak.
You can hear the music in the background. We're rocking, we're having a good time.
Market Night is the place to be every first and third Thursday of the month.
It brings me a lot of joy.
We love Marietta, we love everybody here.
It's so nice here.
I like this. It's fun.
Just like nice here, I love it.
It's the best place ever.
Market Night!
We love Marietta Market Nights.
I love Marietta Market Nights.
It's a fantastic place to get groovy.
What I love is meeting all of the people.
We just love the community and the vibe that's here.
We just enjoy the community.
We love being here and connecting everyone at the Market Nights.
I'm really happy that they showed some high school artwork.
Love Marietta Market Nights. I have grown so much here, I love it.
Been a part of Marietta Downtown Market now for three years.
Coming to Marietta Market Nights for a few months now. I love it, I love the culture, the people.
One of our favorite markets today because we just love the Marietta local community.
And we are thrilled to be part of-
And we are thrilled to be part of Market Night.
Love Thursday Market Nights.
I love it because everybody here is so friendly.
I just love seeing our neighbors and our community come together.
What I love is just the community of it, and people coming out and enjoying shopping local.
I've been doing this since about 2008. I've been here at the market for a year.
Been here a short amount of time, but I really love it.
Have a great time here, the people that we talk to, we make friends every night.
We really enjoy the family atmosphere.
This is my first time at this market, and so far, I'm loving it, there's so many people here.
My favorite thing about the Marietta Night Market is the atmosphere and how there's just everything for everybody.
I've been coming here for over two years now.
I'm happy to show my art, I never had a space before to do that.
I've performed here before as well.
This is my ninth time at the night markets, and I'm planning on coming along many more times in the future.
Love this market because there's a lot of great vendors, there's a lot of different variety.
I love the Market Night, it gives a really great hometown feel.
Love it, we love the people, it's a great thing for the community.
Such a love and support that we're feeling from all the community in Marietta, it's mecca, and everybody's coming out and supporting Winchester, all the surrounding cities.
My favorite thing about the Market Nights is that we get to come out here as a family and have fun together.
We offer petting zoo and pony rides for the kids, and we've been coming here for a little over a year.
We work a lot with the autism community, and we're bringing out all the sensory items for your kiddos.
I've grown so much, great family environment, and I'm here every market.
Been here for about three years, and been in business for about three years, Matthew.
We are here like every two weeks.
We're always here every Thursday.
We love it here, it's very family-oriented, dog-friendly, Ms. Connie's a great leader.
All about being here in the, in the night markets is that we get gathered together people from other, different places.
Love it, love the people, they're friendly.
I like Marietta Night Market, it's a friendly environment.
I love coming to Marietta Market Nights to support my community.
I've been coming here for maybe three years, and I love this market.
I love being here for the community.
I like the people here, they're amazing.
We love it here because of the people, the environment, it's just so nice here.
I love the Marietta Market Nights, I love the people, it's just a fun atmosphere.
And yes, we love it.
And I hope I see you guys in here.
Thank you guys for visiting and checking us out here at the Marietta Market Nights.
Come on down.
See you guys soon.
Look forward to seeing you. Bye.
Small town, big town, all come together.
Yeah!
Connie, I think a few people like the Market Nights.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar, approve of items 1 through 17. The items on the consent calendar were considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from the city council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting?
Madam Mayor? I would like to recuse myself from item number 11, Zone N, only because I own property in the zone, and I also would like to recuse myself from item number 12, LLD 11, only because I own property in the district.
Thank you, MPT Warren, Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to recuse myself from item number 11, Zone G, because I own properties in the zone. Would also like to recuse myself from item number 12, LLD 16, because I own property in the district.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday, Councilwoman DeForest.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to recuse myself from item number 11, Zone G, because I own properties in the zone.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lovell.
I would like to recuse myself from item 11, Zone F and G, because I own property in those zones, and also item number 12, LLD 15, because I own property in that district. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lovell. Madam City Clerk, I'd like to recuse myself from item number 10, because I own property within 1,000 feet of the project. I'd also like to recuse myself from item number 11, Zone A and Zone G, only because I own property in the zones.
Received, thank you for that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward for a motion in a second, I see we have a motion by MPT Warren and a second by Councilmember Lovell, please vote.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I apologize, there was a handout that was given for item number 13, it's an amended contract. I just wanted you to be aware, that's been made available at the counter as well, but I did want to make that, make you informed of that before you made the vote.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
And with that, a motion carries unanimously 5-0 with all of the recusals as listed by the city council and with the amendment of item number 13, and the recusal from Mayor Stone from item 10.
Great. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to public hearings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is public hearing for the citywide user fee update, and staff is on their way up. Item number 18.
Public hearing for fiscal year 2024 and 2025 citywide user fee update and first reading of the ordinance adopting the updated user fees. Thank you, staff, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, city council members. My name is Jennifer Terry, I'm the finance manager, and with me tonight is Ashley Lopez, accounting supervisor. We are here tonight to provide an overview of the proposed update to the fee schedule for fiscal year 24, 25. I'll be providing a background on the user fee schedule and adjustments to the fee schedule based on the changes in the Consumer Price Index. Then I'll turn the presentation over to Ashley, where she will discuss the additions proposed in the user fee schedule, exceptions, or fees that will not be increased by the CPI, and the estimated fiscal impact associated with the proposed fee update. We will close with a recap of the items, recommended actions, and subsequent actions. The most recent fee study was adopted last year in March, and those fees went into effect in July, on July 1st, 2023. The prior fee study was prepared in 2017, and those fees went into effect in 2018. The user fee remained unchanged for five years until the most recent study was adopted. Costs continually increased year over year during that period of time, resulting in substantial increases in fees. It is best management practice to update the user fees annually to offset the continual increase in expenditures. If fees aren't increased annually, the general fund will supplement the cost of services provided to the public, taking away funding that could be used to maintain or improve services provided to the public. Resolution 23-4653 approved the adoption of the fiscal year 23, 24 user fee schedule, which included an annual inflation adjustment. The resolution states, "The city will automatically adjust the user fee schedule on July 1st of each year by the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for the Riverside-San Bernardino-Ontario area, using the year-to-year percentage change from March to March, or 5%, whichever is lower." Tonight's action proposes adjusting the user fees per the adopted resolution, using the year-over-year change from March to March is 4.3%. Implementing the annual fee for the first time, staff realize that the measurement date from March to March, the fees will not become effective until after the fiscal year begins. For this reason, we respectfully request the measurement date be changed for future annual adjustments from March to January. This will allow adequate time to adjust the fee table, work with the departments to finalize the fees, and prepare the agenda report and legal notices for city council consideration in April. Then there will be a 60-day waiting period before the implementation of those adopted fees. I'll turn the presentation over to Ashley, where she will discuss the, what is actually being adjusted.
So in addition, in addition to the fee increases, we are proposing to add fees to the schedule, including short-term vacation rental fees. These fees were adopted on October 12th, 2020. The fees were included in the 2023 user fee study, but were inadvertently omitted from the user fee schedule. We are proposing to add these fees to the new user fee schedule. The fully burned, the fully burned hourly rates for fire positions were determined in the user fee study in 2023, but were not added to the user fee schedule. The fire department has asked that we include all hourly positions so that they can use the appropriate rates if they bill for special events. Fire and fire consultant plan review services are provided for engineering fee types, including grading, precise grade residential, grading revisions, and maps. These fire services were not accounted for in the 2023 user fee study, so our fire department is currently not able to recover these costs. The proposed user fee schedule will add a fire plan check review fee of $178.35, and a fire consultant review fee of $391.13 to these fee types. The fire plan check review fee is based on the fully burned and hourly rates determined in last year's user fee study for one hour each of the fire prevention coordinator and deputy fire marshal. The fire consultant fee is based on fire's developmental review fee adopted in last year's user fee schedule presented under the fire section. Medicinal cannabis delivery businesses can operate within city limits due to the passing of Ordinance 602-24. The police department has established procedures to review and approve applications for the medicinal cannabis permit. This will be a completely new fee. The cost of the permit is based on the actual time to review an application. This includes two hours of a police services technician, too, and one hour of a police sergeant. Based on the full cost of the service, we are proposing a fee of $342. The fully burned and hourly rates were determined in the 2023 user fee study. Similar to fire, planning has requested to add positions to the fee schedule. Planning has 15 deposit-based fees, which require them to bill for staff time spent on a project. Planning lists two hourly fees in the current fee schedule, one for plan check and one for inspection. Both fees are based on an associate planner's hourly rate, even though all planning staff can work on a project. The proposed user fee schedule would incorporate hourly rates determined in the 2023 user fee study for all planning positions. The fees in the proposed update were adjusted by the 4.3% Consumer Price Index, however, there were some exceptions. Library has a self-service kiosk that does not accept or disperse pennies, so the proposed fee schedule includes a footnote that library fees will be implemented in five-set increments that will not exceed the published rate. The fee schedule will show the actual fee increased by the 4.3% CPI, so that current increases will be accounted for in future years. The user fee schedule includes fees set by the state of California, the county of Riverside, and other external agencies. The city collects and remits these fees to the respective agencies as mandated. These fees are set by the external agencies and will not change as part of this proceeding. Examples include mitigation fees and passport fees. The downtown application fee reduction program provides fee reductions to certain development applications for projects within the downtown Marietta-specific plan. The reduced fee for the downtown application fee reduction program will remain in effect as established by the 2018 resolution. The fiscal impact of increasing fees was calculated by annualizing July to December 2023 revenue codes for charges for services and multiplying it by the 4.3% CPI. The projected fiscal impact of $375,530 is dependent on whether activity remains in line with that time period. While revenues would increase, the costs to provide services are expected to increase at a similar rate. Staff recommends that we conduct a public hearing, waive full reading of the ordinance, and introduce Ordinance Number 603-24, adopting the fiscal year 2024, 2025 fee schedule. It is also recommended to find said actions are exempt from CQAT under Section 1506b3. Next steps are to have a second reading of the ordinance on June 4th, 2024. If fees are adopted at that time, they will take 60 days to become effective. The new fees would be implemented on August 3rd, 2024. This concludes our presentation, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll take council questions, and Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions, so the new fees, you said are based upon the '23 study.
Correct.
Is it based upon that study plus the cost of living increase?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And, under the new timing of doing the review from January, January for CPI, and having reviews, it said the fee would go into effect within 60 days of approval from the council, correct? So that does not necessarily coincide with our fiscal year end.
Well, the council, we would take the item to council in, in April, and then 60 days, or we could align it with July 1st, but that is, that is the goal.
To have it done before that, so we could align it with July 1st.
Correct.
Yeah, personally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want the fees to be increased any earlier than once per year, based upon the CPI. My personal thoughts, and what my colleagues think. Thank you, great report, good to see you presenting twice tonight.
Seeing no other council member questions? Oh, sorry. Sorry, that's okay, Councilwoman DeForest.
Yes, sorry about that. I've had a couple comments coming from constituents in the downtown area. Could you just review the downtown specific plan piece for application fees?
So that's not my area of expertise, but this ordinance will not change anything that's been done prior.
All right, so everything done prior, which was 2018, was it?
Yes.
Or 2017? That won't change, so it's going to stay consistent?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Seeing no other questions from council members? I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimonies regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Great, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it back for council discussion. Seeing none. Call for a motion in a second. A motion by Councilmember Holiday, a second by MPT Warren, please vote.
Motion carries 4-1, with Mayor Stone dissenting.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to item 19, Appeal a Planning Commission Decision Adopting a Mitigated Negative Declaration for Development Plan Permit 2022-2605/2023-00006. DP/2022/2605/2023-00006, Marietta Hot Springs at Jefferson Apartments. Welcome, staff, you may begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, or, yeah, and council members. I'm Jared Armia with Development Services, I'm joined here tonight by Aaron Rintamaki, Associate Planner, Brian Stevenson, our traffic engineer, and David, as you know, is our director. The appeal that is before you this evening is for a project that the Planning Commission approved on March 27th. Here's the plot plan of the project, with Jefferson Avenue and Marietta Hot Springs Road fronting two sides of the project. You also will see the ingress egress points. You also will see the ingress egress points. The Yoder Wash, or the creek area, goes through the project site, as you can see by the note on the plan. Also, the adjacent city-owned property contains a segment of Yoder Wash up on the higher end of your screen. Development is proposed on one side of the wetland area, or Yoder Wash, and the area of vacant land, or the area of land that would be placed into open space, is labeled as vacant. Just wanted to give you some orientation as to the location of the site. An appeal was filed with specific points that detail concerns with the adequacy of the environmental analysis and lack of disclosure of impacts regarding traffic safety. I'll go over each of the appellant's points. For Mirada Hot Springs Road, the level of service differs between the north and south sides, as they are in different focus areas. Per the appellant, the initial study, the mitigated negative declaration, or the environmental documents, failed to properly disclose that the project would conflict with the level of service C segment of Mirada Hot Springs Road by indicating, this is the environmental documents that went out for public view, by indicating the project would have no impact on the city's circulation plan, even though the LOS would be worse than the acceptable level of service. Spend some time on this image. This is Mirada Hot Springs Road, and I have some comment boxes here. I'll walk you through this. The staff report identifies the widening of Mirada Hot Springs Road over the Yoder Wash as a capital improvement plan to address the project's impacts on the city's circulation element. Per the appellant, since the timing for the widening of Mirada Hot Springs Road is unknown, we don't have it planned, programmed, or funded, the environmental document should have identified the delayed timing for the improvement and impact of the delay for achieving the city's circulation plan. Until the widening of that segment occurs, the roadway segment's LOS will exceed the circulation plan's capacity for Mirada Hot Springs Road, causing reasonably foreseeable significant traffic safety impacts. The project will be in conflict with the city's general plan circulation element until the roadway over Yoder Wash is widened, which could be many, many years from now. Per the appellant, the environmental analysis and supporting technical studies need to analyze the delay in the implementation of the widening. Here's another image of Mirada Hot Springs Road. What I've done is, in the red arrows, that's the flow of traffic, in green is the sidewalk, and I'll walk you through these. For this project, the applicant is conditioned to install a curb-guttered sidewalk, install a raised median along Mirada Hot Springs Road to prevent left-out, and also provide for a five-foot sidewalk on their front edge, but it also will go off-site. What you'll notice is that there's a close proximity with Mirada Hot Springs Road and the Yoder Wash area, and I'll show the next image in more detail. As you can see, it's very, very close. Note that the off-site sidewalk is constructed right between those two items, and as stated by the appellant, this draft plan for Mirada Hot Springs Road is based upon 45 mph. You're staring at a small segment of the applicant's street improvement plan. With an updated street improvement plan that is based upon 60 mph design speed, there may or may not be new impacts to the wetland area or the Yoder Wash. And as you can see, it wouldn't take much to push down some of the improvements where there may be a net impact. The environmental documents that went out for public review was based on a project design of complete avoidance. With new information, we want to make sure, absolutely sure, that there would be no impacts to a wetland area. If we find that there's new information on that one, that would be important for us to review, and that's why we're explaining this appellant's point in careful detail. Something not related to tonight's appeal, but something that will be a follow-up, is that the Planning Commission hearing on March 27, the commissioners did ask, for the onsite amenities for the future residents, is there an adequate selection of amenities that speaks to all of the users on the site? Because you'll have families, which are infants, young children, teenagers, preteens, young adults, you'll have retirees. And so, the commission wrestled with that. The applicant came up to the podium and said, what they can do is flip the grass area to a totlot. And so, the appellant, for a future date, we'd like to see a little bit more information to make sure that the projects that we're approving speak to the different populations that are on this property, and that's simply something that we'll carry through in the future, but it's part of the staff report. I just wanted to cover that quickly for you. The development code requires a meet-and-convert meeting with staff, applicant, and appellant that did occur last week. No agreements were made. This past Sunday, the city received a letter from the applicant's land use attorney. We have evaluated that letter, and it doesn't change our position in the staff report. We also issued a memo this afternoon. We provided that to City Council. We provided copies to the applicant and the public. They're in the foyer as we speak. The memo explains that there is a potential impact to traffic safety, and additional analysis is required. Of the various options that are before you tonight, City Council may choose to deny the appeal and adopt the environmental document. City Council may also choose to approve the appeal, which overturns the Planning Commission decision. The applicant would be directed to prepare an updated street improvement plan based upon a 60 mph design speed of that road. We also would need a gap analysis, and we'd need an updated SEQA documentation based upon if there was any additional impacts, and also disclosing the points that I made on behalf of the appellant, that we don't feel that, or the appellant's points are that the SEQA document, when it went out for public view, may not have been adequate to detail and disclose the impacts of the project. This concludes staff presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you so much for your report. We are going to move on to council questions. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a statement to make, and I want to thank you for that. Although I did file the appeal on this project, I am truly open-minded and will listen to the applicant's comments tonight. I have not prejudged myself. My decision on this appeal, as a result, I do not believe that I am biased, and I will participate in the hearing on this appeal. And, Madam City Clerk, I also request a rebuttal, if needed, also at this time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Seeing no other council member requests for questions, we'll move on to public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimonies, starting with the applicant? Proponents, followed by opponents, closing with neutral comments, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yes, we have the applicant here, and we will be limiting the presentation to about 45 minutes, so if they come on up. And if a rebuttal is requested, 10 minutes will be allotted.
Yes, no, no. I understand. I can't fill 45 minutes. I promise you.
My apologies. We're not going to sit here for 45 minutes.
Apologies, Madam Mayor.
That's okay. Please proceed, sir.
Pulling something up for him.
I meant the timer said five, but if the timer's not going to be on, I'm okay.
We'll be adjusting accordingly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stone and City Council members. I'm Chris Burt, a land use attorney with Cox Castle &amp; Nicholson. I represent the project applicant. You received a letter from me Sunday afternoon outlining the applicant's response to the appeal. That letter was admittedly long, but the length was necessary to fully respond to the appeal's assertions. I'll try to keep my comments much more succinct, explaining why the council must deny the appeal. First, I wanted to state that it's unfortunate that we're here in the first place. The project that was approved by the Planning Commission complies with all applicable objective development standards. It implements the TOD overlay by constructing much-needed housing in close proximity to commercial and other urban uses. Simply put, it warrants approval as consistent with the city's plan of development for the project site and area. As noted in my letter, we believe that the appeal does not comply with the requirements of the Marietta Municipal Code. For better or for worse, the code does not create a separate procedure for city council member appeals. So, when a council member appeals a decision, he or she is an appellant, subject to the procedural and substantive requirements of Chapter 16.78. Here, the appeal failed to comply with at least two requirements of the code. First, the appeal, as originally filed, failed to state in writing the specific reasons for the basis of the appeal. When filed, the appeal stated only that it was for the project's overall design and environmental analysis. To conclude that those statements are sufficiently detailed effectively destroys the code's requirement for appeals to state specifics regarding the appeal's substance. Moreover, even the appellant acknowledged that the original filing lacked specifics, explaining that she was in the process of acquiring the needed documentation to clearly state the position of her appeal. Thus, the appeal as filed did not clearly state her position. The substantive details of the appeal were only provided with the appellant's statement of supporting, statement and supporting evidence, which were submitted 23 days after the appeal was provided to the clerk. Second, it appears that the appellant did not provide the city clerk with mailing labels, a form and content requirement for all appeals. Because the appeal did not meet the requirements of the code, the city clerk had a ministerial duty to reject the appeal. Although it may be the city's past practice to allow city council appeals without adhering to the code, past incorrect practice does not absolve the city from mandating compliance with the code today. The city council cannot hear the appeal without violating due process and fairness principles and the appellant's request that the city council resolved that the appeal was not properly filed. It also, it is also relevant to point out that the city's staff report is simply a recitation of the allegations of the appeal, trying to fill the gaps of the appeal itself. The staff report, in fact, appears to use the exact same language as the appeal. For instance, the appeal and staff report both state the following verbatim. "The ISMND failed to properly disclose that the project would conflict with the Level of Service C segment for Marietta Hot Springs Road by indicating the project would have no impact on the city's circulation plan, even though the LOS would be worse than the acceptable level of service D." That quote struck me because the appeal and staff report both make the exact same mistake, citing two different standards. First, the project would conflict with the LOSC standard while also acknowledging that the acceptable level of service is LOSD. So, here it appears that staff and the appellant worked closely for purposes of presenting the appeal to city council. For that reason, each time I refer to the appellant or the appellant's arguments, I am, unfortunately but necessarily, referring to staff's arguments and the staff report. Now to the specific allegations of the appeal. The appeal primarily contends that the project's initial study, MND, is inadequate because the project would result in an LOS deficiency that requires analysis in the ISMND as a potential safety impact. This contention is mistaken for a number of reasons. First, the project does not result in an LOS deficiency. The appellant's argument is premised on the assertion that the LOS standard for Marietta Hot Springs Road is LOSC, but that's not accurate. The standard is LOSD, as was used in the traffic study that was reviewed and approved by the city's Public Works Engineering Department. Furthermore, the city used the LOSD standard to evaluate traffic delay associated with the 852-unit Jefferson-Marietta apartment project on the exact same roadway segment. That project is located immediately across Marietta Hot Springs Road from the project site and was approved by the Planning Commission in July 2023 using an LOSD standard. Even if that project is within the general plan focus area, the general plan states that roadway segments are within focus areas, not projects. The city's general plan 2025 Draft Supplemental EIR states that the city's level of service standard is LOSC for roadway segment operations, unless segments are within general plan focus areas where LOSD is allowed. It would be patently unfair and arbitrary to demand that this project use a lower LOS standard than was established and used by the city previously for this segment. It would also be a violation of the HAA, which prohibits agencies from constantly shifting the goalposts with respect to development standards. Here, the project's application was deemed complete by operation of law long before any assertion that LOSC was the applicable standard, and the HAA demands that the project be deemed consistent, compliant, and in conformity with the LOSD standard previously identified by the city. Next to the SEQA issue. The appellant relies on the alleged LOS inconsistency, which does not exist, as a basis to assert that the project may result in land use inconsistency and safety environmental impacts. The problem is that the appellant relies exclusively on the alleged LOS deficiency, and SEQA is unequivocal. LOS or other measure of automobile delay shall not be considered a significant impact on the environment. The appellant also provides no evidence that the project's contribution to automobile delay would result in a safety impact, aside from the delay itself. Pure speculation of an environmental impact without any evidence does not support a fair argument of a potential impact under SEQA. It also bears noting that the city did not find a significant environmental impact based on land use consistency or safety for the Jefferson-Marietta Apartments project, even though that project would result in an LOSE condition along the same segment. In fact, the SEQA document prepared for that project noted that the project can be implemented without significant effects on the circulation system. I simply do not understand how a recognized LOSE condition for a project across the street would not result in an impact, but an LOSD condition is now deemed a safety impact. The appellant's reliance on LOS as the sole basis for a safety impact is unfounded, and the appellant provides no evidence but speculation. My letter provided substantial evidence from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, which is responsible for, among other things, providing technical advisories for implementation of SEQA. OPR reviewed substantial numbers of studies regarding traffic impacts and safety and concluded that increasing intersection delay does not correlate with a safety impact, and that agencies should not use safety as a proxy for LOS analyses. In fact, the alternative was found to happen. Safety increased with automobile delay because cars travel more slowly. The appellant presents no evidence to the contrary. Thus, although the appellant seeks to connect LOS and safety issues, no connection exists. LOS or other form of automobile delay is definitively and legally not an environmental impact. Therefore, any insistence that the ISMND be revised to incorporate an LOS analysis is a violation of the law, including the HAA. It would also force the applicant to undertake significant costly additional study for which there is no legal basis, an unnecessary burden on housing. The appellant next asserts that the project's ISMND evaluate the project potential impacts associated with the widening of Marietta Hot Springs Road east of the project boundary. This, again, is not required. The project does not cause an LOS deficiency, and the traffic study concluded that the proposed project would add less traffic to the segment than other cumulative projects. Saddling this project with responsibility for analyzing the potential impacts of a future capital improvement widening appears to be an attempt to burden the applicant with time and cost associated with analyzing that independent project, a significant exaction. Curiously, even though the Jefferson-Marietta Apartments project, located immediately across Marietta Hot Springs Road, was found to cause an LOSE condition, the city did not demand that that project undertake an analysis for the widening project. It begs the question, why is this project being singled out as responsible for analyzing a future capital improvement project? It's also worth noting that these issues, applicable LOS and alleged SEQA impacts, were previously addressed with staff. In an October letter to the applicant's consultant, city staff first raised the assertion that Marietta Hot Springs Road should be evaluated using an LOSC standard, and that the project's resulting LOS was a SEQA impact that needed evaluation. The problem is that these new impacts came months after the project's initial study negative declaration was circulated for public review, and after Public Works reviewed and approved the project's traffic study and its analysis of Marietta Hot Springs Road against LOSD. It was unclear why the city amended its position so late in the project review process. Nevertheless, we prepared a response that made many of the same points raised in my letter and asserted here, namely that the city cannot apply an LOSD standard, and an LOS deficiency cannot be an environmental impact under SEQA. We received a written response from the city, but there was no continued demand to use LOSC or assertion that there was a SEQA impact. Neither the traffic study nor the ISMND were amended, and the project was presented to the Planning Commission. Therefore, we thought the comments were resolved, and city staff agreed. It's surprising to see that city staff, to see city staff re-adopting those positions now. The appellant separately contends that the interim Marietta Hot Springs Road design and striping condition is inconsistent with the 60 mph design speed of Marietta Hot Springs Road, and because the applicant cannot achieve that standard, an impact would result. This argument is wrong. It presumes that Marietta Hot Springs Road has a 60 mph design speed that can be achieved, but does not. A 60 mph design speed is the city's aspiration for the future build-out conditions of Marietta Hot Springs Road as identified by the general plan, once it is widened eastward from the project's site boundary across Yoder Wash. Marietta Hot Springs Road is not currently built to accommodate a 60 mph design speed as an urban arterial highway. City staff noted- City staff noted this fact specifically in the Planning Commission staff report, and it recognizes it again in its report to the city council, stating that the culvert to the east of the project appears to need to be widened in conjunction with Marietta Hot Springs Road to meet the design speed. Thus, existing design speed is not 60 miles per hour, but 45 miles per hour, consistent with Marietta Hot Springs Road current condition as a collector industrial street. The applicant provided an image showing the existing street conditions. That's this one, I believe, all you have. The existing street conditions versus the planned urban arterial highway. As the image demonstrates, current conditions cannot accommodate a 60 mile per hour design speed as an urban arterial highway. The roadway width is completely inadequate. It's only capable of supporting a 45 mile per hour design speed, which the proposed interim striping improvement achieves. City Standard Number 116 reinforces the issue. A quick review of that standard shows that a street with the current width of Marietta with the current width of Marietta Hot Springs Road is only capable of supporting a 45 mile per hour design speed as a collector industrial street. The 60 mile per hour design speed identified by the appellant for an urban arterial highway requires a curb-to-curb width of 110 feet, which is more than 50 feet wider than the current Marietta Hot Springs Road curb-to-curb width at Yoder Wash. The only way to achieve a 60 mile per hour design speed is to expand Marietta Hot Springs Road. Staff has already acknowledged that the expansion is not the responsibility of the project because there is no essential nexus or rough proportionality between the project and the improvement. Lacking that connection, any demand that the project undertake the improvement would be an illegal exaction. But that's effectively what the appellant is demanding the applicant do. Achieve a 60 mile per hour design speed, which can only be achieved by the widening of Marietta Hot Springs Road. The city simply cannot require that of the project, as it would be arbitrary and capricious and violate the appellant's protections against illegal exactions and takings. It would also violate the HAA by subjecting the project to an inapplicable standard. Instead, the applicable design speed standard based on the existing roadway condition is 45 miles per hour. The interim design condition meets this standard east of the project site boundary. And we were provided a memo 30 minutes before the city council meeting started, raising new allegations about the frontage improvements and whether they can meet a certain design speed. You know, I'm not an expert in design speeds. We do have a traffic engineer here that will address those to the extent address that memo to the extent questions come up. All of the foregoing demonstrates that the appeal lacks merit. It speculates about potential impacts, making incorrect assumptions about project impacts and alleged inconsistencies with standards. However, the standards identified are illusory and incorrect. If the city council grants the appeal and demands analysis against an LOSC standard or a 60 mile per hour design speed, the council will be making an arbitrary and capricious decision that clearly singles out the project and violates constitutional protections afforded to the applicant. It would also be an abusive discretion under the HAA. Therefore, should the council consider the appeal valid, the applicant respectfully requests that the city council deny the appeal. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Chris. Would the applicant like to provide a rebuttal?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, thank you to the applicant for making the presentation. And Councilmember DeForest, as the appellant, you've made the statement, is that correct? You've already made your statement?
I can elaborate on my statement.
If that's the pleasure of the mayor, yes?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I... That's okay, we're going to have you go first, Councilwoman.
We're in the public hearing, and so we're going to, I stopped, we're under public comment, so it's applicant, appellant, then public comment, and then it will go back to the city council.
Okay, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
All right. As an elected leader of the city of Marietta in District III, where this project is proposed, it is of utmost importance to me to ensure the development of this project's fully disclosed project impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA. This is a basic requirement of SEQA. I believe the accompanying initial study and supporting documents failed to disclose or fully disclose certain potential significant impacts which were commented on tonight. I think conclusions were made without providing adequate substantial evidence. Failure to properly disclose potential significant impacts and making conclusions not supported with evidence are improper for the purpose of SEQA. And a comment was made that, how can we look to the future? Well, that is what we're supposed to do. We are supposed to look to the future of this community, and if our standard is a 60 miles per hour for Marietta Hot Springs, we need to stay to that, and it's our position to prepare for the future of our community. So, I will, I could elaborate more, but I know you all read my appeal as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Holiday.
Did you say you wanted to go to public comments first?
Yes, we've opened up the public hearing, so I'm taking public comments right now.
Thank you.
And so I've heard from the appellant and the applicant, and I just want to note for the record, there are no other public comments for this. So I'd like to know, is there any rebuttal request from the applicant? That's all public comment?
Okay. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
So, Madam Mayor, the applicant's going to come up? Absolutely. And it'll be 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potemorn and councilmembers, and the traffic consultant for representing the applicant. Regards to the memo that we received, there were two points made in there and just the cross-section and meeting that 60 mile an hour design speed along Marietta Hot Springs Road. Now, we have a straight section of road in front of the project, and the challenge is to the east of the project and transitioning back to the existing condition. And in order to meet that, and today's curve to meet an existing condition is not a 60 mile an hour design speed today. And so, with the, with the concept that we show is consistent with what the curve is today to transition back to existing. And so, and that is a 45 mile an hour curve to safely transition back from the section that we have in front of the project to the existing condition east of the project on the other side of the Yoder Wash. And that's just the nature of it with the width that's provided until that improvement happens. A straight section of road is a design speed that is, you know, as fast as it can be because it's straight. So, it's the curve that's the challenge to get down to that. And then the second part of the memo that we received is related to the speeds that is experienced along Marietta Hot Springs Road. So, cities undergo speed surveys every five, seven, 10 years, and so it is understood that there is a possibility that the speeds can be higher, but given the conditions of the road, knowing that Jefferson, Marietta Hot Springs tees into Jefferson and that segment of road, that there are methods that the city can undertake, given if the speeds do increase, but I would be remiss that the city would increase speeds, given that increased speeds have been related to unsafe situations. So, keeping the road at a 45 mile an hour would be of good interest to the city. But again, it's all based on the speed survey, and so regardless of whether the project came in, it's still an existing condition that you would undertake because the current roadway is not at a 60 mile an hour design speed today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to move to council deliberation. Any comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam City Attorney, in your office's review of the applicant's contentions that this is not a legal appeal, are we allowed to move forward with this?
Yes, we do believe it's sufficient. There's a subsequent section in the chapter 16.78 that allows additional detail and materials to be provided more than, up to nine days before the public hearing, and that information was provided, which further fleshed out the appellant's comments on the appeal.
And the mailing labels question?
I mean, I believe those were, I mean, we gave the public hearing notice, so the labels were done, I believe.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're legally able to move forward with the appeal. So, earlier tonight during our CIP presentation, one of the CIP projects was a culvert at Yoder Wash, correct? Does that widen the culvert?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So, it will at some point, but the, in the appellant's material, the issue is the length of time or the time that it could take until that completion, or until the completion of the capital improvement. So, there's going to be an issue with the delay of the improvements and what happens out of the street until those improvements are made. And so, you heard Mr. Stevenson included material that identified the transition being a problem. So, until that capital improvement project takes place, the transition is going to be a problem.
And that new, that CIP project that was on the list earlier tonight is a new project? It was just added to the list?
Correct.
And it's currently unfunded?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And if we could play make-believe for a second, if the culvert wasn't there, the Yoder Wash wasn't there, what would development be required to do on Hot Springs?
If that... Good evening, Councilmember Holiday, Councilman. If that pinch point wasn't there, the road would still be designed to meet the requirements of the development code, which require development to adhere to the city's standard design requirements. So, they would need to design to the general plan circulation element road, which has a design speed of 60 miles an hour.
Would that include widening it to the full extent?
To the extent necessary to achieve the appropriate taper. It could potentially not be the full extent.
So, maybe not the full extent, but...
Let's say triangular piece, maybe.
More than what's there today?
Yes.
Because typically, development comes in, I mean, you could have a dirt road somewhere, somebody wants to do development, and if it abuts a paved road, they've got to pave their road, correct?
Correct.
And the Marietta Hot Springs Road east of that is how many lanes?
It varies from six to eight to six to four lanes.
I mean, just from the intersection of Madison to the project?
Six plus, because there's dual left turn lanes.
Because there's dual left turn lanes, and there's not a protected right-hand turn lane here?
No.
And the speed survey you mentioned in your memo, I just wanted to clarify that for a second. So, speed surveys are done for traffic enforcement by police officers, correct?
That's correct. To set the posted speed limit, you need the speed survey and the ordinance update.
And the speed survey has to support an 85th percentile of the speed that's trafficked, that the traffic travels on that road?
That's correct, and then there's some additional reductions that an agency can take if justified.
Depending, like, a pinch point at a wash or something else, yes?
Yes.
I understand. Do you know what the speed survey currently shows for that stretch of road?
I checked that earlier today. The speed survey for Marietta Hot Springs Road from, I don't know exactly where it was taken, it was between Jefferson and I-215, so at some point in between there, it was 45 miles an hour.
Okay. Yeah, that's a long stretch. I mean, that includes the four-lane section all the way on the east. Oh, I guess not. Between 215. So, yeah, you don't, you wouldn't know exactly if it's in the, basically, three-lane section in front of this project or in the six to eight-lane section going across the freeway.
Yeah, I wasn't able to find the actual survey, just the summary.
Okay, appreciate that. And can we talk about LOS? C, D, I've never heard of an E, so that may be an education point for me. I've heard C, D, and F. If you could talk about what this project is required to do and the project across the street that they mentioned. Level of service D, I think, was mentioned for the project across the street, that that was its requirement, but the applicant feels that we're trying to impose a level of service C on their side? Is that accurate?
That is accurate, per the city's current general plan circulation element.
How is it different on one side of the street versus the other?
The city has a requirement for roadway segments throughout the city to operate at a level of service C or better for all roadway segments. There's an exception that the, with the last general plan update, I believe, that the city council adopted a level of service D within certain focus areas of the city, where I believe they wanted to attract different, maybe, types of businesses.
And so that D was applied to the north side of Marietta Hot Springs on Jefferson, by Jefferson?
That's correct, because that's in one of the focus areas.
Understood. And did I read somewhere that this project actually has a level of service F on one segment?
Not on a segment. There is the left turn movement from, if you're heading southbound on Jefferson Avenue and turning into the project driveway, that movement was shown to operate at a level of service F.
And that was in their study they provided to staff?
That was.
Which was approved?
Yes, that, I need to elaborate a little bit. The city's requirement for intersection level of service is an overall intersection level of service D or better.
D as in dog?
D as in dog. So, that's a weighted average of all the different movements at the intersection. So, all the northbound and southbound through traffic that's passing by, an unsignaled driveway would weigh in and help the intersection work better than the left turn movement into the site.
Wouldn't that left turn at a level of service F back up into that intersection, potentially?
When we saw the level of service F at that location, we commented and requested for the queuing analysis to be supplied to the city to determine if there was enough room for queued vehicles that are waiting to turn into the driveway, if they could be stored in the storage lane without extending into the through travel lane. And I believe the estimated 95th percentile queue was somewhere around 175 feet, and the current conceptual striping plan shows 175 feet of storage, which would accommodate queued vehicles.
Barely.
Barely.
No room for error. Okay. The sidewalk that you showed, somebody showed on one of the slides, shows that sidewalk right next to the lane of travel and jogging around the Yoder Wash. The applicant provided, provided this document. Have you seen this?
We did see that when that was submitted earlier today.
But it's just showing existing ultimate curb-to-curb and existing curb-to-curb. It's not showing what the proposed sidewalk would look like.
I didn't see that. This drawing is labeled JPI, and that's the development on the north side of the street. However, it was prepared by the engineer for this current project we're discussing right now, and we haven't had enough time to determine if those actual improvements were, in fact, the improvements that JPI had shown.
And just for my own education, is there a level of service E?
That was a surprise to me. I don't recall there being a level of service E or an unmitigated improvement for that project.
Is, but is, does that exist?
Yes, it goes from A to F.
So, E is part of the metrics?
That's correct.
Okay. Didn't know that. I thought it was A, B, C, D, F, like grades in school, and F was failing. All right, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you. I just think that we need to be, to look at the concerns and fully disclose the potential significant impacts of this. I want to say that I look forward to that area building out. I'm not against the project at all. I know there's a need, obviously. So, I'd like to see this come to fruition, but what I am concerned is I'm sitting here on the dais, and I've been posed to make sure that, that we look at significant impacts and traffic, and traffic safety. In our meet and confer... In our meet and confer, I know you said that you wanted to be good stewards in our community and that you were here for police and fire, and you were here because of the quality of life. Well, I, I believe that all those things are why we are sitting here on the dais. And I just, I, I'm saddened that, that the analysis and disclosure isn't clear and, and that you didn't bring anything more to the table for me, except that my LOS is wrong and that you shouldn't be a C, you should be a D, and that we should only be going 45 miles an hour, not 60. So that, you know, that, that makes me very sad. And I want to be a good steward for my community, so that's why I appealed the project. Not because I don't want your project, I do want your project. We need your project. So that, that's the only comment I have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Seeing no other requests for, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Holiday.
Sorry, I have one more. Actually, a question of the applicant. Whoever wants to take this one. Do you feel, if this body continued this appeal, that you would be able to work with the appellant and staff to come to a solution to the problems that we are facing today?
I wish the answer to that question were yes, but based upon what I'm hearing today and the expectation for making certain improvements off-site, that are not the responsibility of the project, that the city is seemingly demanding and suggesting that without those improvements, it's impossible to create a condition that would, would be under the city's, under city staff's position, safe. I don't think it's possible. It seems to me like any developments here is impossible under the rubric that we've been given. And so unfortunately, I think the answer to that is no, because it's just, we've, we're in a situation that's created an impossibility.
Should I also understand your answer to mean that you wouldn't be willing to do that?
Oh, we'd be willing to entertain anything, absolutely, right? But the question is whether or not it's possible. And it seems to me like city staff is telling us that it's impossible.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. Seeing no other questions from council, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We're going to go ahead and call for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move to continue this appeal to give us time to do our due diligence with all the new information that we've received today. There's a lot of information that we need to digest and go over, and I am not at this time ready to make a decision.
And I will second that.
If I could just ask this a point of clarification, can we continue it to a date certain so that doesn't have to, the public hearing doesn't have to be re-noticed? And maybe to June 18th so that staff has adequate time to prepare the staff report?
I agree with that.
Okay.
And I, I second that.
And if I could modify the motion slightly or just comment on it?
Point of order, I'm not here on the 18th.
I'm also going on the 18th.
July 2nd.
Okay. You'll have to go to-
July 2nd.
I'm also going on July 2nd. I'm sorry, I'm going back home for like three weeks.
I think our next meeting is like August 20th?
It'll have to go to August. It'll have to be postponed to August.
I'm sorry. I mean-
Yeah, August 20th would be the next.
August 20th would be the next one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll find someone else to come in instead if I can attend, so find out if it works.
So it'll be July 2nd?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Now, Councilmember DeForest, is July 2nd acceptable?
Okay. So the motion, you want to-
Thank you for that consent. Yeah. Okay.
State your motion, please, again.
Okay, the motion, move to continue this appeal to give us more time to do our due diligence to continue this to July 2nd.
Thank you. And I will second that.
And can we add to direct staff and the appellant to meet with the applicant to see if there's a possible resolution before that date?
I'll go with that.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes. Yes.
Madam City Clerk, do you want to take a verbal roll call, please?
No, Madam Mayor, I can just get this in the system real quick.
Yes, ma'am. Take your time.
So I have a move, a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Warren and second by account by Mayor Stone to continue the public hearing to July 2nd and direct staff to meet with the applicant prior to that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to call for the vote, if that's okay?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, MPT Warren and our city clerk. All right, we're going to move on to discussion item 20, the fiscal year 2023, 2024, third quarter financial status report and proposed budget adjustments.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Councilmembers, Jennifer Terry, Finance Manager, and with me tonight is Giovanni Calvopina, Financial Analyst. Tonight's report is to update the city council, staff, and residents on the budget update for the third quarter of fiscal year 2324 and to discuss proposed adjustments to the operating budget. We are coming to a close of the first year of our biannual or two-year budget. This report includes a few personnel changes affecting this fiscal year. These changes are incorporated into the revised schedule of authorized positions for your approval. We will provide the year-to-date revenues and expenditures through March 31st. Staff is proposing amendments to the fiscal year 2324 operating budget and one adjustment affecting the capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2324. And finally, we will provide a schedule for future financial updates. The most recent, or the, most of the changes on this list are title changes, but staff is proposing to adjust the fiscal year 24 authorized position list by adding one-half of a position, one-half of a full-time equivalent position. This adjustment would result in a total of 477.59 full-time equivalent positions through fiscal year 25. The comprehensive list of authorized positions can be found in Attachment 5, and the cost for this additional part-time position will be absorbed by salary savings within the Here we have a comprehensive overview of revenue and expenditures through March 31st. The table includes the adopted and amended budgets for reference, year-to-date revenues and expenditures, in addition to the changes to the proposed budget we are proposing. Citywide revenue collections to date or through March 31st are 64% with expenditures at 60%. There are a few revenues that are performing very well, which are interest earnings, property taxes, and licenses and permits. Staff is proposing to increase these revenue categories as part of tonight's action. However, as we discussed during our last budget update, that other revenue sources weren't doing, weren't performing as well, mainly sales tax, transient occupancy tax, property transfer taxes, and some charges for services, as well as gas tax. So as part of tonight's action, we are proposing to reduce those revenues, and Giovanni will detail those more in, more in detail later on in the presentation. To compensate for the revenue reductions, the city manager asked departments to identify where they could save on budgetary costs. Between salary savings for vacant positions, reductions in operating and maintenance costs, and postponement of one-time capital purchases, staff identified nearly $3.3 million in budgetary savings. These savings are offset by some increases that are necessary to maintain services. More recent budget update presentation has been from a citywide perspective. However, tonight's presentation will focus more on the general fund and Measure T. I'll now turn the presentation over to Giovanni to go over revenues and expenditures through March 31st and provide a more in-depth discussion on the proposed changes to the revenues and expenditures.
Thank you, Jennifer. For this presentation, as it was mentioned, our focus will be on the general fund and Measure T. However, for those seeking a condensed overview of all five major funds, the general fund, Measure T, Fire District, Community Service District, and the library, please see Attachment 1, which will provide a summary. Additionally, for a detailed breakdown for, of individual general ledger accounts, please refer to Attachment 2. These attachments offer a more granular breakdown, facilitating a deeper understanding of our financial performance and allocations across various categories. The general fund has collected 69% of its anticipated revenues and Measure T has collected 55% of its revenues. The table provided, the table provided identifies the city's key revenue streams alongside their correspondent budgeted and actual amounts. We will go into sales tax discussions subsequently, thus beginning with the other key revenue sources. Property taxes collected is 6.5 million, constituting 67% of the amended budget. This figure reflects a 7% increase over the prior year, aligning with the ad valorem tax and indicating a stable home environment driven by the addition of new homes to the market. Other miscellaneous revenues encompass developer impact fees, federal and state reimbursements, and miscellaneous revenues like interest earnings. This category experienced a substantial 36% revenue increase compared to the previous year, totaling $12 million through March, rendering it the second-largest revenue source for the city. This is primarily driven by interest income in the general fund, state reimbursements, and developer impact fees. Lastly, we'll touch on charges for services, which represent revenue generated by the city to offset expenses incurred for services rendered, including plan checks, inspection services, and internal administrative charges for internal service funds. The total of 2.8 million reflects a 28% decrease compared to the previous year, mainly due to plan checks and inspection services. Sales taxes serve as a key revenue stream for the city. This slide represents a comprehensive overview of sales tax collections from July to March over a four-year period, separating between the Bradley Burns and Measure T that voter-approved 1% sales tax. The previous slides showcase a seven months' worth of revenue data. This graph encompasses eight months' worth of receipts. Both Bradley Burns and Measure T sales tax revenues have displayed some fluctuations over time, but generally exhibited a stable trend with moderate growth. However, recent collections reflect a slowdown influenced by various economic factors such as interest rates, inflation, and a reduction of disposable income. Further insights into the regional sales tax trends will be provided in subsequent slides. Specifically, Bradley Burns receipts have decreased by 3% compared to the corresponding previous year, while Measure T's sales tax receipts have experienced a 1% decline. These figures account for 55% of the budgeted sales tax revenue for the third quarter. Consequently, this update will include revisions to the sales tax projections to align current collections with estimates for the remainder of the fiscal year. This table sourced from our sales tax consultants, HDL, represents a year-over-year data for the fourth quarter of the calendar year. Murieta observed a sales tax, a sales decrease of 2.9%, excluding anomalies. Concurrently, the county experienced a 1% decrease, while the overall state saw a 2.5% decrease. Inflation has led to higher pricing and financing costs, particularly affecting the auto and transportation and fuel service sectors. Restaurants have encountered challenges stemming from menu pricing driven by elevated labor and food costs, which have impacted patronage. Overall, we've witnessed a slowdown across most business groups. This table represents sales tax trends in different counties throughout the end of 2023 calendar year. Riverside County, along with Orange County, Los Angeles County, experienced a decline ranging from 0.5 to 4%. Despite that, Riverside County's performance was similar to its neighboring counties and it did better than San Bernardino County. Conversely, San Diego and Imperial Counties showed more robust percentages, demonstrated a greater ability to withstand the economic challenges than Riverside County did. Nevertheless, the region has been experiencing slower-than-expected sales tax collections. We will now move into the year-to-date expenditures for general fund and Measure T. As of March 31st, expenditures stand at 62% for the general fund and 70% for Measure T. The personnel category represents the largest portion of our expenditures for the city. In both funds, this category has not yet reached the anticipated 75%. This deviation is primarily due to several vacant positions, some of which won't be filled until next year. The operations and maintenance category are delayed due to the timing of specific expenses that are irregular or scheduled later during the year. Variances for this period are mainly due to significant contract service expenditures for the Departments of Public Works, Planning, and Finance, which are scheduled for the fourth quarter but not, but have not yet been accounted for in this report. Capital outlay is currently at 12% for the general fund and 96% for Measure T. This is largely attributed to construction-related expenses for capital projects and postponed purchases for vehicles and equipment. Finally, finally, allocations stand at 75% for both funds, aligning with expectations at this stage and marking the three-quarter mark of the budget utilization. Before reviewing the proposed changes, I want to express my appreciation to staff and management for their dedicated efforts in mitigating the impacts of our current challenging economic climate. These adjustments that we're about to discuss tonight are a result of a collaborative effort among all city departments in pursuit of a long-term fiscal sustainability while maintaining a high standard of service for our residents. The proposed adjustments primarily target the general fund and Measure T, encompassing the majority of citywide changes. Therefore, our focus will be on scrutinizing changes within these two funds before addressing significant changes in the others. In the proposed general fund budget, we anticipate a 3% decrease in revenue totaling 1.9 million. This reduction stems from a mix of decreases and increases among different revenue streams, which we'll examine by category. To begin, Bradley Burns sales tax and transient occupancy tax, both are expected to decrease by 1.9 million each. However, property tax collections are projected to rise by 385,000. Its noteworthy increases include an interest income of 1.5 million within the other miscellaneous revenue category, along with additional 239,000 in this category, primarily from federal and state reimbursements. Charges for services have de- Charges for services have declined by six hundred and fifty-two thousand, primarily for engineering and planning services, while increasing by three hundred and twenty-one thousand for police, public works, and building and safety services, resulting in a net decrease of three hundred and thirty-one thousand. Property transfers have decreased by two hundred and fifty thousand, while licenses and permits have de-increased by a hundred and thirty-six, aligning collections with anticipated receipts for the remainder of the fiscal year. Let's now review the proposed expenditure changes within the general fund. For personnel costs, we're looking at one point two-six million dollar reduction primarily stemming from currently frozen or unfilled positions until the next fiscal year. However, there are also increases of four hundred and two thousand due to the introduction of a new position and adjustments to benefits. This is a net decrease of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand overall. Operations and maintenance and capital outlay collectively are proposed to decrease by one point two-two million. This is mainly due to adjustments in contracted services and postponed purchase of police vehicles and public works-related equipment. However, within this category, there are increases of nine hundred and forty-six thousand for contracted legal services, consulting services, and higher electricity costs, resulting in a net in- decrease of twenty-nine twenty-seven thousand. Finally, after the reconciliation of risk-related expenses, allocations are being proposed to be reduced by five hundred and eighty-four thousand. Here's a refined breakdown of the proposed changes for measure T. Starting with revenue adjustments, we're proposing a budget reduction totaling two million, representing a seven percent decrease. These adjustments, this adjustment aims to bring our soon our sales tax collections in line with anticipated receipts for the remainder of the year. Expenditure adjustments, we're proposing reductions of almost six hundred and twenty-six thousand, encompassing both decreases and increases across various funds. Personnel decreases amount to a hundred and ninety-one thousand mainly due to vacant positions in the finance and library departments. Operations and maintenance within this category, there's an increase of a hundred and seven thousand primarily for the implementation of intergov software for the code enforcement department. And covering costs with associated with the vehicle lease, including interest expense. Conversely, there's a decrease totaling three hundred and twenty-two thousand within the same category, primarily from reduced spending on landscaping services and advertising costs, resulting in a net decrease of two hundred and fourteen thousand. Postponed equipment and purchases and vehicle acquisitions are the remaining are the remaining of the increases totaling ninety-four thousand. Allocation allocations have been reduced by a hundred and twenty-five thousand following the reconciliation of the risk-related services. To conclude the review of the proposed changes, we will assess significant revenue expenditures across the remaining funds. The primary change in the proposed revenue within these funds lie in the other miscellaneous category. We are proposing an increase in interest income of one point six million across the remaining funds. Additionally, there are proposals increases of one point seven in federal and state reimbursements primarily benefiting police and fire departments. Developer impact fees are related to rise by eight hundred and forty thousand to align current collections. Local transportation of measure A revenues is proposed to increase by nine hundred and eighty thousand. Finally, there's a projected decrease of one million in gas tax revenue to align with forecasted revenues. Regarding major proposed expenditures adjustments, we plan to increase operations and maintenance by one point eight million for the Los Alamos water district water system with ARPA funds. Furthermore, there are proposed decreases of one point one million for general liability and property insurance expenditures, which have also decreased allocations citywide. This slide showcases our existing overall operating and sustainability reserves, which were earmarked with council approval for various operational and specialized expenses, which include fleet replacements, facility repairs, and pension trust applications. When the current budget was adopted, both general fund and measure T had operating reserves set at thirty percent, surpassing the target of twenty-five percent. However, due to amendments made to our current budget, these reserves currently stand at twenty-eight percent and twenty-seven percent, respectively, still exceeding our goal. Nonetheless, our combined operating and sustainability reserves remained at seven at over seventy-nine million, and we are not proposing any changes as part of this action. This slide provides a condensed overview of the estimated fund balance for five major funds, the general fund, measure T, fire district, CSD, and the library. Additionally, attachment four includes a similar summary which lists all funds. This table illustrates the beginning balance, proposed revenues, transfers in, out, and expenditures for each fund. It also outlines capital outlay, user reserves, and transfers to reserves. The general fund is projected to have an ending unassigned fund balance of thirteen point seven million, while measure T is estimated to have one point six before any transfers in or out for the fire district, CSD, library. These three funds will undergo a year-end reconciliation, bringing their ending balance to zero as part of year-end. And I will now pass the presentation back to Denver.
Thank you. Our future finance updates include the adoption in June of the fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine capital improvement plan and budget. The fire district requires an annual adoption of their budget, so we will be holding a public hearing in June to adopt the second year of their budget, and this is this only affects the fire district. Then in the fall, we plan to provide two updates, the first quarter budget update for fiscal year twenty-five and the fiscal year end or fourth quarter budget update for the current fiscal year twenty-four. The recommended actions for this item tonight are to accept and file this report, amend the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four operating budget as defined within the report, amend the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four capital budget for project two-one-zero-three-four, and approve the updated schedule of authorized positions. And this concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your report, and I am not surprised that Councilmember Holliday is in the queue already.
I live there permanently. Thank you for your presentation. If you could go back a couple slides. That one. Why is the estimated ending unassigned fund balance in the fire district negative?
Because they had increases in their expenditures at an earlier part in the fiscal year, and their transfer in was not adjusted to account for that. We are anticipating that the fire district will come in under budget, and we can just reduce their transfer in to zero them out.
So we just it's because we're not to the fiscal year end yet?
Yes, yes. Otherwise, we would be tying up unassigned fund balance from measure T, and I'm trying to keep the money we have in measure T as is.
And despite everyone's expectations, that is the only question I have. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Ron, for being not verbiageous in finance as you have been in the past, so I just want to say thank you for the report. And I appreciate the conservative fiscal approach. Did I hear you say that we are we're actually doing a freeze in our hiring until fiscal year, which would be July, which is not that far? Is that correct?
We have frozen some of the current positions that are vacant that are nonessential. There will be, as we continue to monitor our sales tax, we will will continue to evaluate that. There may be a freeze for next year of the new positions that are slated to come online. But that hasn't been brought to you for discussion.
Okay, all right. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Seeing no one else in the queue, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Bring it back to council discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Call for a motion in a second. Oh. Okay, no problem. Okay, so we have a so we need a motion in a second. It went away. Redo it. Okay. Motion carried by Councilmember DeForest, second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number twenty-one, the purchase and uplifting of five twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four police vehicles, and uplifting of five remaining twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three vehicles. And sir, welcome. Nice to see you. I don't think your mic's on just yet, sir. There we go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Potem, council members. Captain Phil Gomez here to discuss our police vehicle procurement procedures and policies. Forgive me for my voice. I recently had surgery on my vocal cord, and so I just asked for just a little bit of patience with my voice, and I might need to drink some water while I while we go through this. I understand recently in one of the last meetings, there were some questions relating to the purchase of three vehicles from out of state. I hope that during my presentation here, we can get some answers to all that as to how we purchase vehicles, why we purchase vehicles, and what types of vehicles we purchase, and how we go through that decision-making process. So. What I plan to discuss is a little bit of background, different types of manufacturers for police vehicles, different types of police vehicles out there, how we spend our money for our police vehicles, what our current needs are, what our needs would be moving forward, and then open it up for questions. Hopefully, I'm able to provide such a great presentation that you have none, but I'm going to be definitely available to answer any that you might have. So our yearly budget is approximately one point two million dollars for the purchase of replacement police vehicles. So these vehicles that we replace are old. What I could say is currently there are some vehicles out in patrol, black and white patrol vehicles, that are ten years old. They have well over a hundred thousand miles on them. We're spending money from our maintenance budget to keep them running. But and there's several reasons for that. Typically, we don't have vehicles that are ten years old. You wouldn't want typically a patrol vehicle out there that's has over a hundred thousand miles on it, which is why we have such a high budget to replace vehicles each year. In our fleet, we have over a hundred and fifty vehicles, not all of which are out in patrol, black and white. We have approximately forty-five of those. The different types of vehicles we have are the police patrol vehicle, which are specifically made for government agencies and tribal police departments. They're made by Ford, Chevy, and Dodge, and only government agencies and tribal police departments can purchase those vehicles. Civilians are not allowed to purchase those vehicles because they're completely different. They have different engines. They have larger brakes. They have bigger air intakes. Their suspension is different. Their tires are different, so only government agencies can purchase those vehicles. And then we have detective vehicles, vehicles that administrators like myself drive, community service officer vehicles, which are typically a compact truck of some sort. We have police motorcycles, and we have specialty vehicles. That would be something like an equipment truck. We recently purchased a SWAT equipment truck from Paradise Chevrolet for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That was about two months ago. So these are the different types of vehicles that we have in our police department. Like I said, Ford, Chevy, and Dodge produce police patrol vehicles. They only produce them once per year. They're not produced on an ongoing basis. They open up the ability to purchase these vehicles once per year in the springtime. So we place an order for what we want to purchase. Typically, it's about ten police patrol vehicles per year. Those vehicles aren't produced until the summer of the following year. So if you missed your window to purchase vehicles or to place your order, you're you're out of luck. You have to wait till the following year till the order window opens. So what we experienced in twenty-twenty-three, Ford had a strike in their production facilities, and they were not able to produce police patrol vehicles that year. Now, I'll get into a little bit later why we choose the Ford Explorer. But in twenty-twenty-three, we were not able to take possession or order police vehicles. What Ford did was they they moved those orders from twenty-three to twenty-four. So our fiscal budget obviously runs from July to June, and we had for twenty-two twenty-three budget, we we had money for eight vehicles. In twenty-four, Ford told us, you're only going to get five because everyone was scrambling for vehicles across the country, because the year of twenty-three, no one got vehicles. So it created a scarcity for the Ford Explorer, which is what ninety percent of all police agencies in the country purchase is Ford Explorer police pursuit vehicles. So with that, we only receive, we haven't even received those five, by the way. We're not expecting delivery until June. So that was again in twenty-three. We were not, we didn't receive. So the other three, because remember, we ordered eight, we had money for three more. We found a dealership in Colorado. Our partners at the Riverside Sheriff's Department told us about this dealership, that they happen to have surplus. Most dealerships do not purchase police vehicles to sit on their lot. They purchase only the amount ordered. It's not really a good business practice to have unallocated police vehicles sitting around in hopes that someone buys them. So this particular dealership happens to do it that way because they know there's always police agencies that might need some for various reasons. So we found them. We obtained a quote, and we requested last month for you to approve the purchase of those three vehicles. So now moving forward to fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-three twenty-four, our current fiscal year. As you heard from the finance department, they were requesting different departments to give back money to help with our current situation. So we gave back approximately five hundred thousand dollars of our vehicle budget. That left us with the amount available to purchase five more vehicles. So in our current budget and tonight, we're requesting the ability to purchase five vehicles from the same dealership that has some surplus vehicles. We did a search. I spoke with the fleet manager at Paradise Chevrolet. No one is able to find Ford Explorer police vehicles. Actually, couldn't even find Chevy police vehicles because they're only purchased once per year or produced once per year. So we're requesting five more vehicles from budget year twenty-three twenty-four from Phil Longford in Colorado. The reason we decided to use and we choose to use Ford Explorers is not just because ninety percent of the other agencies in the country use them. There are two agencies that actually conduct testing of police vehicles every year. That's the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and the Michigan State Police, the only two agencies that actually receive police vehicles from all manufacturers, and they do a comprehensive testing of those vehicles. Ford Explorer is consistently rated at the highest in safety. And those of you that remember, a couple of years ago, when one of our officers was involved in a head-on collision with a fleeing suspect at a hundred and thirty-two miles an hour, that resulted in the death of one of the suspects in that vehicle. But our officer survived and we believe he survived because he was in a Ford Explorer. That head-on collision at a hundred and thirty miles an hour, he was able to still continue doing his job. And the Ford Explorer is rated as one of the highest in safety. It's the only vehicle that's tested and rated at seventy-five miles per hour rear-end collision. It's, it's produced on a unibody frame, which allows it to have maneuverability like a sedan. It gives us the cargo space of a, of an SUV. It is one of the highest in top speed. It's, it's equal to and better than some in braking. And so this particular vehicle is approximately fifty-five thousand dollars per vehicle. Chevy Tahoe, for instance, is approximately ten thousand dollars more than the Ford Explorer. It's also built on a Ford, I mean on a truck frame. So the maneuverability isn't the same and the cargo space is more. But I would, it's not, may not be worth ten thousand dollars more. Maybe for a police K-9 or a specialty vehicle. We do have a couple detective vehicles that are Chevy Tahos. However, the black and white vehicles for the community of Marietta, we've chosen the Ford Explorer that produces the, allows us to give our community the best and highest quality police service. The way we currently buy our vehicles is we receive bids from agency, from vendors, both in Riverside County and outside of Riverside County. We follow and we work closely with our partners and Finance Department to follow the city's procurement policy, which states that we're allowed to use competitive, competitive bid process. And we're also allowed to use government contracts to help, to piggyback on. So we receive our bids. We ask Gosh Ford, because they're a local business, to provide us with quotes. But unfortunately, because there would only be purchasing ten and the government contract we can piggyback might have a hundred and fifty on it, the, they're usually outbid or underbid, they're a little over. So we're unable to use them regarding our current policies. The detective vehicles, however, those are one-time purchases and they're not the police pursuit models. So just in the last two years from Gosh Ford, I've spent approximately six hundred thousand dollars buying detective vehicles from them. And like I said, we also buy from Paradise Chevrolet. We spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand to buy a specialty equipment truck for our SWAT team. We also buy Jeep Grand Cherokee from, we bought one from Paris Dodge. So we do try to spend money as much as possible in our local communities. Unfortunately, there's no Ford dealership in the city of Marietta, which would really allow us to receive that tax benefit as well. Police motorcycles, we also purchase those. Those are also done in the same way. And we also purchase or select vendors both in and outside of, of our county. So our current needs are the five patrol vehicles for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Moving forward, this summer, Ford will open up their order form for the following year, which would be spent out of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We plan on purchasing another ten patrol vehicles come this summer. And we plan on using vendors both in and outside of the county. I currently have bids in my possession from Fritz Ford in Riverside. I'm awaiting the bid from Gosh Ford in Temecula. And I do have one from out of county in LA, which is currently the lowest. We plan on purchasing one police motorcycle and three detective vehicles. At this time, I can open up for questions.
Thank you so much for your report, Councilmember DeForest. Nope, okay. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Officer Gomez, for that presentation. That was a very thorough one. The, the context for how much you guys have spent in the community, that's very resonating and I really do appreciate that. One question, the motorcycles, you guys use BMW. Is that, do you guys ever stray from BMW? Because I might know a good KTM dealership here that would make some awesome police bikes.
So we, we, every year, the same two agencies, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and the Michigan State Police, they also do the testing on police motorcycles. So currently, the BMW is our, our chosen vehicle, or our chosen motorcycle, sorry. However, we are open, we do own KTM's.
Yeah, for the off-road?
Yes.
Yeah. The, is that selection criteria for the motorcycles also based on safety factors only?
Yes, not, not only, but yes, performance, safety, best practice, you know, what other agencies are, are using the majority. The maneuverability of the, of the motorcycles. Our department, you know, Harley-Davidson is a producer of police motorcycles also. They might look cool and sound cool, but they may not be the best vehicle, motorcycle for our community. Maneuverability and maintenance.
Might be the worst for that.
Exactly. So we do look at other factors and we're more than willing to look at KTM for police vehicles, or police motorcycles.
That's cool. Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Because you haven't heard enough from me tonight. Yeah, go ahead, try. I just want to note, Councilmember Lavelle, KTM is not within the city of Marietta.
It's, it's what, in the middle of the road, right?
Yes.
And it's county.
But they do sponsor events in our community.
For the BMW motorcycles, we do have a BMW dealer within the city of Marietta. Do you know if they sell motorcycles?
They do not.
They do not.
We've tried many times to see if we could purchase from them. They're unable to obtain police motorcycles for us. The closest is Escondido. We, we, we get a bid from them. We usually get a bid from Riverside BMW and from Long Beach BMW. Those are the three closest dealerships.
And are those BMW dealers motorcycle-only dealers?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
They sell cars and motorcycles? So this BMW dealer could buy motorcycles if they wanted to.
I, I think they would probably need a, a contractor and a, and a avenue to purchase police vehicles.
And they probably would have to commit to buying a lot more than just the one that we're looking for.
Right. And we, and we only budget for one per year. And it, it may not be some of a business, good business practice for them.
Well, thank you for checking all avenues.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments with regard to this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Bring it back for a council member discussion. Any discussion? You want more? Okay, seeing none. Let's call for a motion in a second. I see we have a motion from MPT Warren, a second from Councilmember Holliday. Please vote. Thank you. We're almost done.
Yeah, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to governing body announcements. Governing body announcements is an opportunity for the city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. A city clerk will use the computerized timer. And Councilmember DeForest, you are at first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't take much time, but I did attend the State of the College at Mount San Yuceno, which was a great event. Was nice to see our community college improving and growing dramatically. And one of the most exciting things that I did was I presented to the Marietta-Temecula group. And we spoke about the Southwest Riverside Higher Education Coalition that is been in existence for getting going this year only. We got a lot of momentum going and I am very, very proud to say we got a five-point-five million dollar donation to the expansion of the San Marcos campus at the Temecula-Mount San Yuceno College University Tower, which it is now called. But I'm really proud Supervisor Washington helped us facilitate to get five-point-five million and we're talking to a couple of different organizations that are willing to put up the rest of the money possibly so we can make that come to fruition. Originally, we started for eleven million and now it's up to eighteen due to costing. So I figured we should just go for around twenty. But that was very exciting. And so thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And the rest you can read. If you need to get ahold of me, there is my email address and my cell phone. Please feel free. Thank you so much, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Two updates. I attended the Southern, or SoCal Jazz and Blues Festival. If you guys didn't hear about it or go yourselves, it was way more grandiose than I had expected and I honestly cannot wait to see the, the country, whatever that's gonna be called, the country music one. I'm really looking forward to that. That amphitheater, that area was made for those types of events and I was, I was blown away by what, what that turned into. So I'm happy to see that finally taking some wings and I think it's gonna be amazing going forward. And then also attended with most of my other colleagues, the annual law enforcement appreciation dinner and award ceremony up at March Airfor, March Airfield Museum. And happy to see some of, I think three Marietta officers got awards or acknowledgements. Oh, there you go. Cindy has pictures, so I'll let her talk about that or show those. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not read all of mine, but I do want to highlight a couple of them. Thank you for asking me to fill in for student of the month. I've been in this valley since before the city was a city. Student of the month has been going on for decades and for some reason, I had never attended one. And I was honored to represent the city council and the mayor at that event. And actually, it gives me hope for the future, listening to those students and, and their accomplishments and what their goals are in life. And, you know, in a, in a world where it's easy to be distracted, they stayed focused and are some amazing kids that we're producing out of this valley, which is why we need to stop the brain drain. But actually gave me hope. I also attended the Every Fifteen Minutes along with some of my colleagues. Great job. Officer Montoya did a fabulous job on that, the whole. I got a video of the sheriff's helicopter flying in. Very, very well done. Hopefully, it, pardon the pun, is a sobering reminder for all those children of, of what it's about. And many, many other things. Probably the only other thing that I want to mention is the grand opening of our second Chase Bank at the Costco Center. I know that's not what it's called, Scott, but that's what I call it. And what is it, the Vineyard? Vineyard. But most cities do not have two Chase Banks and we do, so I'm gonna yell about that. It was very well attended and they were appreciative that the chamber and council was represented there. The rest of my stuff, you can read online and reach me by my email address, which I think is listed as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
I have pictures. So it seemed like once we got off the airplane from Sacramento, all we do is run to events. That's all we did. And here are some pictures, really talking about the Every Fifteen Minutes. And I'll let you know that I have been very involved in this program in the Orange County days for twenty years. And I have never been to a finer event. And I know that this event had a sobering effect on our community. And I understand that there was not one incident with our kids going to prom this year. And that is phenomenal. So great jobs, Officer Montoya. And I gotta tell you, it left you with a feeling of hope. And the message came through loud and clear. And I want to thank you and the department for doing that. And I look forward to going to next year's too, so thank you for that. I also attended the Jazz Festival and if, I wanted you to see all the people because five thousand of my closest friends were there with me celebrating. We had a great time. And I'm not a jazz person, but I am now. That was so much fun. My next one is the LaAC, I think that's how you say it, Awards. So honored to have our department represented by three fine officers. Oh, and the dog, four, I'm so sorry. Yes, and the dog, thank you. We have a lot to be proud of in this city. And, and that's to the testament of the leadership of everybody that runs departments here. So thank you very much, Chief. And we, three of us attended the Rotary, the next slide, Marietta Vocational Service Awards Luncheon. Always a great luncheon and this time they had shade, so everybody was quite happy to be there. And lastly, there's other things in here, but we did attend the Marietta Hydration Station Van Tap Shop. And, and Ron and I had some water with, is that a, is that a water drop? With, with the water drop. So you can always reach me, everybody has my email and I think everybody has my phone number. So thank you so very much. That concludes my report.
Yes, Mayor?
So, did you, did you not get my GBAs?
I did not.
Okay. Then I will, I will defer to our next council meeting. But I do want to, just real fast, since I brought this. Councilmember John Lavelle cheated, as I stated at the last meeting, with regards to the Mary, the Tour de Marietta. So I, I brought my award that I won, by the way. So isn't it absolutely beautiful? And I want to thank Ernie Sanchez for honoring me at that event. Absolutely.
Next time the electricity of my bike's gonna work.
Okay, so again, I will move to my GBAs to the next council meeting. We'll move on to council member requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. Now is the time for the council member request to add or withdraw items to future agendas. There'll be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation of requests may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues?
Yes.
Councilmember Holliday.
Madam City Attorney and Madam City Manager. On the resolution that was brought up earlier, item seven point four about reconsideration, does that, if I request for that tonight, does that go to a fixed meeting date or is that flexible? Do you need to see this?
Yeah, that would be helpful because our policy seems different than just what Rogers rules is. Thank you.
No, not according to that. That would just be consensus. It doesn't say in there.
So it would, if you, for example, wanted to make a motion to reconsider that, then there would need to be a second and a vote to reconsider it and then the item would be reconsidered. Then there'd be a separate motion on the actual item. And so your question was if you have to set a date when that would happen?
Correct.
Yes, and the problem is that that, if it's about the diff, that's a public hearing that I think was a forty-five day notice?
Thirty-day notice.
Thirty-day notice. So we'd have to set it out a bit.
Which is fine. I'm not looking for it to happen quickly. In fact, I don't know that I want to schedule it at all tonight if I was going to make that motion. I just want, I don't want to lose an opportunity.
Oh, it's because it's tonight, it's the same or the next meeting, yeah?
Yeah, because that.
Usually has to be at the same meeting. It's unusual that our code allows it at the next meeting. Because it's not on the agenda tonight, but I guess this is like carving out an exception to the brown line.
I don't know. So if I make that motion tonight and it passes, we can, we don't have to set the date tonight. We can set it at, and I could with. We can set it at, and I could withdraw it at some point in the future, I think, too?
Probably, you could withdraw it. And staff would have to calculate the timing. And depending on what your motion is and what you, if you wanted to change the report, we'd have to look at what the noticing requirements would be.
Okay. So I'd like to make that motion for reconsideration at a future date not to be set tonight.
A second that.
I agree with you. It's weird because it's not on the agenda. So can we even discuss it? Not really.
No.
I mean, I've never seen a reconsideration rule that allows it at the next meeting, so I don't know.
May have to look at cleaning up that language.
Yeah.
Anyhow, so do we just vote?
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration on the DIF item from Councilmember Holliday, and a second from Councilmember Stone.
Everyone vote.
I do have a clarifying question from City Attorney. So Councilmember Holliday was in the majority, which is what's allowed, and Mayor Stone was not. Does that make a difference?
It's just the person who makes the motion that needs to have been on the prevailing side.
Okay, understood. So we have a motion and a second? If I could call for a roll call vote, a verbal vote, would that be okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm gonna do the roll call vote now. Councilmember DeForest?
No.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Holliday?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Warren?
No.
And Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries with Councilmember DeForest and Mayor Pro Tim Warren dissenting.
And I could just ask as a point of clarification, although you already voted on it. There were two resolutions on the DIF item? Is it on both resolutions or just the one adopting the new rates? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. In honor of Mother's Day, I have a little quote for all of us. In honor of the upcoming Mother's Day holiday, I would like to share the following quote. "Sometimes the strength of motherhood is greater than natural laws." So with that, no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good rest of your evening. Thank you.